Okay, we'll go ahead and call the City Council Meeting of June 22 to order. First on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. Lieutenant, could you lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, could you call the rule? Baklan?
Present.
Ossenga?
Here.
Kreit?
Here.
McClure?
Here.
Butt?
Here.
Cease?
Here.
Mayor Terry?
Yes.
You have a call, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Next on the agenda is citizen comments on any subject except those items scheduled for public hearing. Since we're still under the COVID rules, there's a number of ways that the public could provide comments, including submitting to the clerk to be read, being connected telephonically, and then also the opportunity to appear and deliver comments in person. Madam Clerk, who do we have to start off? Donna Bach, and she will be speaking in person. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, citizens and council of the city of Seward. I appreciate the opportunity to be here in this beautiful city, the home city of our Alaska State flag. I'm just here as a citizen. I'm based out of Anchorage. I'm originally from Bethel. I'm one of three partnership specialists with the U.S. Census that has conducted outreach, and I applaud your local efforts to promote the census. I see the signs all around. Right now, Alaska's self-response for the 2020 census as of this past week is at 47.2% statewide. Currently, Seward's rate is about 45.2% over the average of Alaska's response since the census operation efforts kicked off in January of this year. 28.5% of the citizens of Seward within the Seward Census tract have responded via the Internet. Currently nationwide, Minnesota is number one in response rates, at 71.1% completion of self-response to the census. The state of Alaska is at 51 out of 52 with a 47.2% response. I want to encourage as many people in Seward who have yet to respond to the 2020 census to do so as soon as possible or as soon as they receive an invitation. We know that there are areas that are fairly remote, even here in this great city, that's considered update leave. We want to encourage those folks to wait until they receive the response. We know there's a lot of PO box holders, for example, in different regional hubs throughout Alaska. We want to encourage citizens that as soon as they receive their invitation to respond and understand that it's safe, it's easy, and it's confidential. It's not as hard as doing your taxes, and we know July 15th is coming up right around the corner. So it takes less than 10 minutes. People can respond online via telephone or by sending their completed census forms in the mail. People can also visit my2020census.gov and respond online or call 1-844-330-2020 to speak and respond to their invitation at their convenience. One thing I noticed you guys have advertised for census takers, the Anchorage Census Operations is still recruiting for the non-response follow-up phase, which is delayed obviously due to COVID. The non-response follow-up phase kicks off August 11th and will continue until October 31st. If people have not responded yet, that means they may get a visit or a household reminder between mid-August and into late October. In order to avoid a visit from a census worker, we highly encourage people to respond as soon as they are invited to. As part of the non-response follow-up operation, the U.S. Census Bureau will be visiting every household that has not already responded to the 2020 census to ensure a complete and accurate count.
So I'm just going to stop right here and say, this is not an issue that's politically one side or the other on any item, so I'm going to let you go ahead and finish speaking, just even though your time has finished.
Okay.
So please finish up.
Thank you for the accommodation. If a family member is not home when the census taker visits during the non-response follow-up phase, they may leave a notice of their visit with information about how to respond. Census takers are mandated and are following the CBC rules and will follow social distancing protocols as applicable by state and local law with regards to protecting the health and safety of citizens. Until October 31st, 2020 households can continue to respond online or via phone. There's great resources. You guys obviously have continued to promote that. We know that this is key for critical federal future funds. It's almost like a reverse permanent fund dividend that lasts for 10 years. So, you know, if you can add a dollar amount of $3,000 per Alaskan over the course of 10 years, that's really critical, and we want to make sure that every Alaskan is counted. We applaud your efforts, the city of Seward and other key 2020 census partners, to make sure every Alaskan counts. I am available as a resource. The city clerk, Brenda, has my contact information. If you're fielding any questions, comments, complaints, I'll be happy to serve as a resource to get the appropriate answers to you as they come about. So thank you, and God bless.
Right, God, thanks for coming.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, one question.
Okay, I just want that 800 number. Okay, thank you. I got the 2020. Thank you very much.
Okay, what was it, the rest of it, 844?
330-2020.
So yet again, I'm not going to be extending the time for the rest of these. I mean, obviously, most issues have one side or the other, so just to be fair, but since that was a pretty comprehensive item for all of Seward. Madam Clerk, next. Linda Paquette will be speaking in person for her citizen comments.
Thank you, council and citizens. Linda Paquette, roll point. I just wanted to encourage you guys to be leaders. We're at a time where this issue of mask-wearing seems to be really dividing the community in a big way. I don't know what the numbers, you know, in terms of who was for and who's against, and how many emails you've gotten, all of that. But you know, this is a country where we have traditionally cared about each other, and we've traditionally passed laws that have been about caring about each other. That's how secondhand smoke laws came about. It's how seatbelt laws came about. It's about how drunk driving laws came about, right? And mask-wearing is, I care about you, so I wear a mask. You care about me, so you wear a mask. And it seems like that's gotten lost somehow in this political thing. And people have to realize that, you know, there's a lot in the media that's being manipulated. A lot of it's being manipulated. There's graphics going around with lots of quotes that look like, you know, all these medical people are saying they're bad for you. And when you check with somebody that's in the medical field, they tell you, well, those have been taken out of context and manipulated for a purpose. So we really, I think the entire community is looking to you guys to lead, and I know it's not going to be easy, and I don't know how you manage the enforcement end of it. I really don't, but I really do hope that you'll really lead from a place of caring about each other and not this business about my body, my rights, my liberty, my, you know. That's not, that's not America, really. You know, we're a land of laws, and we're supposed to care about each other. So that's what I have. Thank you.
Next, we have Cristiana Smith, and I will be reading her citizen comment.
My name is Cristiana Smith, and I reside outside Seward city limits. As a citizen of the Seward area, I would like to make comments in regards to the animal shelter presentation. As a pet owner, advocate of pet adoption, supporter of the Seward Animal Shelter, and the Save Our Seward Pets organization, I am excited to see the forward movement for a new Seward animal shelter. The Seward Animal Shelter has been an ongoing city project with not much traction towards the goal of relocation and build until recently. I encourage council members and Seward citizens to visit the current Seward Animal Shelter. While visiting, I would like you to keep in mind the following questions. Is the shelter easily accessible for all community members? Is the shelter somewhere that I would want to work, volunteer, adopt from, or generally visit? Can animals in native quarantine be done effectively at the shelter? Can veterinarian care be adequately provided to animals at the shelter? Where and how is food prepared and stored for the animals at the shelter? Is there space to provide pet ownership education regarding care and training? Is there space to provide humane education classes for community members and students? Is there an additional revenue stream other than that of adoption fees, city license costs, and animal control fines? After visiting the current Seward Animal Shelter, please review the design plans for the new animal shelter and answer the aforementioned questions. The difference in your answers between the current Seward Animal Shelter and the design plan for the new animal shelter should reveal the necessity for considering the approval of the new design and funding the project to relocate and build a new Seward Animal Shelter. Not only will the new Seward Animal Shelter improve the quality and standard of care and housing of animals, but it will provide a better work environment for the animal control officers and volunteers, as well as become an enhanced resource for pet owners, community members, teachers, and their students. The design for the new Seward Animal Shelter also has been developed with an identified need for additional revenue through the inclusion of an animal wash station that can be utilized by residents and visitors. Thank you for your time to listen to my comments.
Thank you. And that was the last citizen comment. That was the last citizen comment?
Lots of public hearing comments.
Oh. Next on the agenda is approval of the Agenda and Consent Agenda. Do we have a motion? Actually, I'm sorry, prior to the motion, I have, actually, you can go, and then I'll ask my question. I'm sorry, sir.
Okay. I move for the approval of the Agenda and the Consent Agenda.
Second.
I do have a question for the city manager, prior to us approving the agenda. So Resolution 2020-051, we had the special meeting two Fridays ago where we talked about the process of distributing these funds, but this resolution is just purely accepting the funds from the state, correct?
Correct. I probably should have updated the title because that was meant to include all of the plan, which we did not do at this point. So it's just encumbering the first disbursement from the CARES Act.
Okay. So that will come back before us again?
Correct.
And Resolution 2020-050, so that people don't get confused, that is a coronavirus grant, but that's going straight to the fire department, and that's a separate grant that they've applied for?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone have any changes or questions on the agenda? Yes, council members?
I'd like to remove from the consent agenda 2020-051.
Okay. Are there any other changes, clarifications, additions? Okay, hearing and seeing done. Can we call for a vote, please? Cease?
Yes.
Butt?
Yes.
Kreit?
Yes.
Ossenga?
Yes.
Baklan?
Yes.
McClure?
Yes.
Mayor Terry?
Yes.
The Agenda and Consent Agenda have been approved. On the Consent Agenda, we have Resolution 2020-048, adopting the Planning and Zoning Commission priorities from April 2020 to April 2021. Resolution 2020-049, authorizing the city manager to sign an extension for the special services contract between the city of Seward and the Department of Public Safety that provides dispatch and clerical services to public safety employees in Seward for $36,000. Resolution 2020-050, accepting the 2020 State of Alaska Department of Public Safety Coronavirus COVID-19 Grant in the amount of $5,709.47 in appropriating funds, approval of the June 8, 2020 city council regular meeting minutes, approval of the June 12, 2020 city council special meeting minutes, and approval of the June 16, 2020 city council special meeting minutes. Thank you. So I am noticing on the agenda, though, the emergency ordinance is just listed under New Business. It's not listed as a public hearing item. Yes, let me clarify this. So that's my confusion. Yeah, so after the agenda was published, I checked in with the city attorney because in, for thinking about the citizen comments I was going to receive, and I asked a question if I needed to separate them into a public hearing area, and she did, she said yes. I should do that. Okay, so we actually, what we should have done is amended the agenda, which we did not do. Should we make a motion now? Because it's not a public hearing item. Right. No, I didn't think about. So I'll make a motion to move, I think I can, I'll make a motion to move Emergency Ordinance 2020-007 from a New Business item to a public hearing item. Do I have a second?
Second.
See attorney on the phone?
Yeah, I'm not here. I'm not working.
Okay. Can we call for a vote on that, please?
I have a question. Is it a public hearing and enactment, or is this just first public hearing?
Since it's an emergency ordinance, it would be public hearing and enactment.
Okay, thank you.
So moving Emergency Ordinance 2020-007 from New Business to Public Hearing. Cease?
Yes.
Baklan?
Yes.
Butt?
Yes.
McClure?
Yes.
Kreit?
Yes.
Ossenga?
Yes.
Mayor Terry?
Yes.
This motion has been approved. Thank you. Next on the agenda is Special Orders Presentation and Reports. First, under Proclamations, is recognizing Spring Creek Correctional Center Employee of the Year Matthew Chezek. So even with COVID, let's stand up here and we'll just say six feet away, because I think that this is a very auspicious honor. Congratulations. I'm sorry that we weren't able to do this in April. It's well-deserved, and I'm going to go ahead and read your proclamation. Whereas Spring Creek Correctional Center started the Employee of the Month and Employee of the Year program in 1991 to show appreciation and recognize those who display high level of professionalism, and whereas Correctional Officer Two Matthew Chezek has been selected as the Spring Creek Correctional Center's Employee of the Year for 2019, and where he began his career in 2006, and where in 2007 he began volunteering for Shift Two Tactical Team, where he spent the next five years learning from his predecessors and peers until mid-2012, when he was voted Tactical Team Leader for Shift Two, and where he was instrumental in helping form the Spring Creek Correctional Center Special Operations Response Team in 2013, which he was Team Leader until the mid-2018, and whereas during his time at Spring Creek Correctional Center, he has been a pepper-bolt technology master instructor armor, and whereas he was also named the Shift Two morale officer because he was always quick with a laugh and a smile, which you can't tell because he's wearing a mask today. Now, therefore, I, Kristi Terry, mayor of the city of Seward, Alaska, do hereby recognize and congratulate Correctional Officer Two Matthew Chezek on being awarded the Spring Creek Correctional Center Employee of the Year for 2019. And I just want to also thank your beautiful wife and your wonderful children for being here today, and thanks for letting your dad go to work to do such a good job every day. We appreciate it. So I'm going to hand you this, six feet away. Would you like to say something, sir?
I'll just say a few words. I'm extremely honored and I'm humbled to be selected 2019 Employee of the Year. There's plenty of candidates. There's 12 months in the year, as we all know, and everybody that gets selected for Employee of the Month is eligible to be Employee of the Year. We have plenty of people over there deserving of this award. So I just want to acknowledge that, that we do have professionals across the bay. They're honorable. They're dedicated to their jobs, and they care. So that being said, I just wanted to say thank you again, and I appreciate all you guys, what you guys do. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, and I just want to add to that. We definitely appreciate Spring Creek, all the employees over there, and everything that gets done. So thank you guys very much.
Thank you very much.
Next on the agenda is a certificate of appreciation for KIBH FM 91.7. So this certificate of appreciation is presented to KIBH FM 91.7. Is there someone here, Jessica? I don't, Wolf is supposed to be here, and Becky. I care if she's coming. All right, great. So on behalf of the city of Seward, thank you for your tireless efforts and dedication to keeping the citizens of Seward informed and educated during emergencies, city council meetings, and board and commissions meetings. Thank you for going above and beyond the call of volunteerism for your passion for informing and educating Seward citizens. And especially during this time of COVID, I know that you've filled some spots, some health spots, and then last year during the earthquake, you were instrumental in making sure information got out for that. So I just want to thank you for your service. Here, I'll elbow bump you.
I was looking around because I thought somebody else was going to be here with me, but thank you.
And then, same group, okay. Amateur radio?
Oh, yay, hi. Yay, hi, guys.
Yeah, my shirt.
Whereas amateur radio operators are celebrating over a century of the miracle of the human voice broadcasting over the airwaves, and whereas amateur radio has continued to provide a bridge between people, societies, and countries by creating friendships and sharing of ideas, and whereas amateur radio operators provide critical communications for the city of Seward after the 1964 earthquake. These amateur radio services are performed by nonprofit organizations consisting of volunteers, and whereas local enthusiastic citizens have recently formed a new club named the Seward Amateur Radio Club, and whereas these volunteers wish to continue the service of past amateur radio operators and provide emergency communications during emergencies, and whereas these same individuals wish to demonstrate the technology skills and capabilities of amateur radio to the public. And whereas on June 27 and June 28, 2020, the Seward Amateur Radio Club will participate in the American Radio Relay League Amateur Radio Field Day's demonstration of the radio amateurs, oh, National Exercise, which is a 24-hour emergency preparedness exercise and demonstration of the radio amateur skills and readiness to provide self-supporting communications without further infrastructure being required. Now, therefore, I, Kristi Terry, mayor of the city of Seward, do hereby officially recognize June 21, 2020 through June 27, 2020 as Amateur Radio Week. Yay. Did you guys want to say a few words?
Yeah, just as the vice president of the Seward Amateur Radio Club, I would like to extend an invitation to the mayor and the rest of the city council to stop by on our field day on the 27th, 28th, meet your local radio operators out at the ball field. We're going to be there all day, all night, doing a radio relay across the nation. So we'd like you to come out there and see us.
And now take the ball field at 4th Avenue?
Yeah.
Okay, and what time?
It'll be starting at 10:00 a.m. and going through the next day.
Okay.
It's almost 24 hours.
Thank you, guys. Next on the agenda is the city manager's report.
Starting now, we do have some disbursements. The Harbor, so a new remote control unit for the 50-ton travel lift, $10,500. The Electric Department has a purchase order for fire retardant clothing, $15,000. The Electric Department has some 2- and 4-inch conduit for inventory, that's $16,900. And Public Works, they need an injection pump on their Unit 137, and that's $6,500. And I do want to draw the attention to the personnel report. So when the liaison and I transferred it, apparently some of the available positions did not get into the report. The editing took them out. Let me take this off so you can hear me better. So there were three positions not included in your report that are in our report. The police dispatcher, the manager for the electric utility, and the personnel officer are all three positions that were advertised and are currently open. It's a pretty long report, so if you have any specific questions regarding the actual report. I have some updates on the interims and things like that, if you would like me to go through that, or if you'd rather just do the questions first.
Just with the personnel report, have we received any interest where a city manager, electric utility manager, or the finance director?
So we have received applications on all three. Doesn't mean they're qualified applications. We have three interviews on Thursday for the assistant city manager. We had one applicant that doesn't quite mesh up with the utility. So just contracted for an interim finance director. It's actually, let me read you the information. So we did interviews with firms and several individuals. The person that we're going to go with is, his name's Maladon, and Elena Bajogovic, and I don't know if you were here, but in 2011, they did our audit. So I'm not sure if you're familiar. They're called Clear Idea Accounting and Consulting, and they're out of Anchorage. They came to us through Foraker, so Shelley actually was the reference. And we interviewed some local people and some other qualified individuals, and they were kind of one that stood out. But this is just interim. They're not going to be long-term. We do have some tasks in a meeting tomorrow to identify some of the journal entries and things that they're going to go over with us for the audit. I can't officially tell you that I have an interim director for the electric utility because right now they're in session determining if he's eligible with his conflict. He's a retiree of one of the rail belt utilities, so he has a one-year contract where he needs to get that board to approve him to come in and oversee us during our transition. Doesn't look like that's going to be an issue, and so we should be able to sign his contract tomorrow, and then he could start on Wednesday. So I'm hoping that all goes smoothly. Let's see here. So yeah, we do have three interviews Thursday for the assistant city manager. It's also a project manager. The finance director position continues to be kind of like all of Alaska. There are several places that are still looking. And then the other, the other piece, I'm trying to think what that was the...
Did that answer your question?
Yes.
Councilmember? Councilmember Kreit?
I just had a question in regards to the campgrounds. Is it June 28, the campgrounds are opening every spot? Is that my understanding?
So the campground software, it requires 30-day activation, so you can't unlock a whole block until the 30 days come up. So Tyler, I should have had Tyler here, or he could explain it a lot better. He did send out an information update on the campgrounds and the parking that I sent out. I would assume the job...
I can say that, did you?
Did you see that?
I did see.
But, so yes, the 28th, and unfortunately, that's Sunday. It's kind of a strange day, but that's the 30th day. We talked to them about opening it up earlier, and the problem with that is the people that haven't paid the additional, there's a gap. So if you change any of that during the period, it causes a lot of problems with the schedule. And there's a lot of bumps and things that we're learning and trying to adjust as we go through this the first year. So we didn't unroll it and kind of make a big deal out of it, because at that time, COVID was kind of just at a peak, and we didn't want to tell everybody, "Come to Seward." So we are, the mandate is, even during... So, so we are, the mandate is, even during the restriction, it was 25-feet spacing, which our spots are way wider than that. Um, so we did, as a precautionary method, take alternating every spot. And then on the 28th, it would allow for all of the spots to be opened, which obviously, we've had a lot of concerns and calls. Lots of people get down here on the weekends, and there's no place to camp. And then they get here and they try to do the reservation because they didn't look at our website or they didn't understand that, you know, it does have an online reservation system. And so they show up at like 1:00 in the morning and try to register, and there's one spot that doesn't fit their rig and all that kind of thing. And, um, so I would assume as we open up the whole campground, there's going to be some adjusting, not only for us and our staff to move tables and make things more accessible, but for people that are already taking up multiple spots, to try to tell them, "Hey, you have to confine yourself into one spot again." So there's a lot of, uh, a lot of what-ifs. But it is a additional cost factor as well for the city. Um, it's, like, like all the things, it's been reduced, and so... Does that, did you have specifics you wanted to?
Yeah, I just wanted, I had seen that it was on the 28th. I just wanted to verify. I didn't see that in the...
We've had a lot of calls, and how come, you know, it can't be on Friday night? Or how come you can't do it on the weekend?
Software notification. Are there any other questions? I know that we were going to add under the City Manager's Report the memorandum about the Jesse Lee home. So if there's no other questions, maybe we'll let the City Manager speak to that.
Sure. Um, so, so actually, we're going to have Jackie go over that real quick, but it is included as a laydown?
Is that, um, can you go over the address on the line?
Okay.
Did you want, is Jackie there?
Hi, so I have...
Didn't get to the dais as a laydown, but it was emailed out to us.
It, yes.
It's just a...
I apologize.
Yep.
We didn't print out her copies.
Did you want to just go through it real quick, Jackie? It's just an updated memo.
Okay, Mayor, Council, I'm sorry, I had to ask for this to be added to your agenda as a discussion item. Since you guys have received the presentation on the Jesse Lee home, and I, you know, community development is needing some direction on how we need to move forward with either abatement or the idea of repairing Jesse Lee homes. You know, the costs that were given at the last council meeting, we were given by the engineer service that had originally done a structural report. So we've, you know, they've done it twice. I'm just concerned that we're into June, and I know with COVID happening, I don't want to see the city lose out on funding from the state that needs to be spent and used by the end of the year. And so if I can get direction from Council on how they would like us to proceed in the Community Development Department with the Jesse Lee home, it would be really appreciated.
So, I guess, um, I read through that memo, and I don't know if it outlined any options. I wonder if we need to have a work session, or do we want to... Did you want to go over what the options are to decide upon?
Yeah, so, um, we had one option given to us on just the abatement. And the abatement is a little over $700,000. That doesn't make it so it's structurally sound. So, my understanding is to make it structurally sound for them to abate it would be between 1.5 and $2 million. That's just to make it sound so they can go in and do the structural abatement. If we wanted to abate it and repair it, you're looking at a price tag of close to $24 million. And the biggest part of the abatement, and the most expensive part of the abatement, is the getting the men and women into the basement and cleaning out those areas. So, um, you know, I, I know this is a really touchy subject, and I am fully aware of the significance of Jesse Lee to everyone. I just think that I don't want to see the city be here in another 10 years in the same situation. So I would really like...
So it's a bait...
...for the council to, you know, we can do a, we can do a work session. We can supply you with all these numbers again. It's just, unfortunately, I can't even get developers to look at it because of the abatement number.
So what, what I think, yeah. What I think I need is a number for abatement. I mean, I just need exactly what the options are. Abatement, demo, restoration. You know, I know the Historic Preservation had a, had a motion and approved that they would like to see it not saved, but as much retained as possible, if that means keeping the beams or what that looks like. So I mean, if we have a work session, maybe before our next meeting, but I want a lot of information and all the options laid out clearly. And it needs to be given to both Historic Preservation and also Friends of the Jesse Lee Home. Can, is that something that's possible? Well, how does Council feel?
I like it. I think it would be good to get it all down, this line, and this line, and this line, so we know. But it should be all of us that know, yes.
And not just the presentation from the Engineering Department. We need our options clearly outlined on...
So I could add, um, the last work session was really kind of informal, and the engineer and everybody was here to talk about the fact that the beams, the infestation of the lead paint, most of the building and materials are not salvageable. And that's in the report that you received. But I think the reason I wanted to bring it back for a public hearing is because Mayor Squires told the community, "We will have a public hearing. We will open it up for comment." And, and this council really just needs to determine, are we going to follow the engineer's recommendation, which is to do demo with the abatement funds? Or are we going to... They're saying the salvage, and you heard about the costs and all that. If it'd be, you could build four buildings for what it costs to abate and rebuild that. So literally, it's pretty one way or the other. But it, it should be, you know, the public has ability to comment. And I have received emails and texts, things, people want to have an election on it. Well, those types of things are going to take time, and the money has to be expended by this time next year. So we have till June 30th of next year.
So...
And in the winter, obviously, you don't do abatement with the snow and the weather. And so for us to do an RFP and get that money utilized, it would, it would be kind of a short order, so we could do that rather quickly. And I get that, you know, there's still a lot of, what do you do and what don't you do? But I think the intent of the last work session was to have the engineers explain in that report. And I'm not an engineer, and I can read the report. It's lengthy. Um, but it, it does really detail the options very well.
No, not as well as I would have liked to see.
John Haven.
I was just going to say, that presentation, they came up with the numbers for abatement and demo. They gave us those numbers.
I understand, I understand the numbers, but they're just our consultants. What I'm looking for is for administration to say, "Demo means this. Like, here's what we can salvage. Here's what we can do." I mean, I have that presentation, and that last page just had it broken down with the numbers. We need a recommendation from administration on what proceeding with those things look like.
So that's going to take additional resources to, like, okay, are we going to haul away on barge?
Yeah.
We need to get estimates and forecasts.
No, I honestly just mean a narrative of, you know, like, demoing. So demoing the whole thing is not $700,000.
Just cleaning up the abatement is...
That's what I'm talking about.
Just the abatement.
That, exactly. That's exactly my point. So what's the total cost of demo?
Nobody knows.
Exactly. That's my point. So that's the information we need.
Okay, but what I'm saying is you need to hire a cost estimator and some professionals to do that work. Like, I don't, you know, I could talk to Norm, and we could give you a figure, and it could be way off the mark.
I think it would help to have an estimate.
Wasn't the abatement demo thing included in the last report? Wouldn't they have information on the demo too?
They, they said it would be, I mean, some of the detail explains it would be cost prohibitive to haul it to Anchorage in semis, or maybe the train...
They said they had to do that because nobody else deals with asbestos.
Correct. So, so I mean, I mean, we can get a general idea, but...
Yeah.
Okay, and just looking at the...
Mayor? Councilmember Kreitz, go ahead.
I'm sorry, looking at the budgetary estimate on there, you know, it has the demolition portion of it. This is based on Alaska demolition of A.C. Ons is the contact person. So they had estimated roughly...
1.1 million.
For that part of it, twice that.
Councilmember...
To demo the, to demo the building with the abatement was 1.5 to 2 million.
Okay.
And I can gladly break that down into a narrative if you, you know... And I'll call and round and get the numbers for barging it out. I just need direction, you know, because I was told to bring forward what the cost would be to save the building, what the cost would be to demo the building, and what the cost would be to abate the building. And so I did that, and that's why I'm asking for direction from the council as a whole to let me know if they need more information than that. I'm glad to provide it. I will work on it. But we need some clear, clear definition or direction, because we, we provided what we were directed to get.
Well, I'm, I'm hearing from the City Manager that he wants to have a work session.
No, I, I feel like we provided the work session. Maybe we didn't ask enough questions.
Yeah. It was a presentation in a regular meeting.
Yeah.
So what's the wishes of the council?
I'd like to see numbers.
And that's where I like, I feel like the engineer could explain the numbers. I don't want to get into, like, spewing out a bunch of information that I didn't tabulate. And we're, you know, it's there. We just need to have, if you don't understand all the information, they need to provide you detail on how they calculated it, what the estimates are. I think it's pretty clear in the narrative that they don't believe that salvage is possible or that renovation is a cost-effective measure.
Well, I can, I can just say that, and you can't see my face, but just hear my voice, and I'm very frustrated because the memo that came to us was one paragraph. So what administration would like, we, we can't give you direction now because it wasn't publicly noticed and there's nothing...
Correct.
So if you'd like to bring a resolution forward, should we have a work session? What would Council like to do?
Yeah, the intention was to, on the 13th, have a public hearing where we get a resolution that says, "Are we going to do demo, or are we going to do some other alternative?"
Okay, so Councilmember Bucklon?
It is not by fault of the administration not to have it on the agenda.
No one's saying it's not your fault. I'm just asking what... There, in that paragraph, there was no direction recommended, recommended from administrations. But what I'm hearing now is a resolution's going to come forward with recommendation on the 13th. Councilmember Bucklon?
I do agree that, I don't, I don't think we need a work session. I think we need either bring us three resolutions with three different options on abate and save, abate and demo, and what the cost is, and bring those three, and then have a public hearing, and then we have three options, and we can decide.
Councilmember Cease?
I got a little kind of lost in the numbers here. Jackie, you said that to repair the Jesse Lee home was 1.5 to 2 million. That is just the demo. No matter which way we go, we get the demo, correct?
Yes, ma'am. The, the demo was 1.5 to 2 million.
Okay.
And that is including the abatement, but not the cost to haul it off, because we have not been given that. And part of bringing a resolution forward to you would require us to go out to RFP to get the exact cost. We can only give you estimates. We cannot give you exact cost without going out to RFP.
So the 24 million was for them to haul it off, estimated?
No, that was for the, that was for the reconstruction.
No, the 24 million would be to renovate it and not even have full renovation. It would be basically replacing the roof, cleaning out the, the hazardous materials, and making it structurally sound.
Oh, I'm sorry. I put it under the wrong column. I'm sorry.
I mean, at this point, I'm ready just to see one resolution to demo it. And then if that gets failed, we can bring something else forward. I mean, the problem with three, the three resolutions is we're having attorneys spend more money to do three things. So if it's administration's recommendation, then that's what they should bring forward.
Okay.
Councilmember, or Vice Mayor?
I'll agree with that, if we can get that on the 13th.
Yeah.
The next meeting.
And Council wishes it to be a resolution for public hearing? Sure. Specifically?
I would think so.
That sounds good.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions for the City Manager? Did you have a question, Councilmember Cease?
Don't think I did, I don't know.
Okay, next on the agenda is the City Attorney's Report. Mrs. Wells, I think you're on the line?
Yes, I am. And I'll rest on my, on the case of the report unless anyone has any questions for me.
Are there any questions for the City Attorney?
Thank you.
Thanks for joining us on the phone. We know that the highway was closed today, so we appreciate your efforts.
If I apologize, but I can't be there. Hopefully, that connection will, will be good enough, and, and it will work out from here. Thank you.
We're thankful that you're well. Next on the report are other reports and announcements. The next item on the agenda is the Chamber of Commerce Report by Jason Bickling.
I'm going to call him in. I think I did that last time. You don't have to dial the area code.
Good evening.
Hi, Jason. It's Brenda. You're on with Council to provide your report.
All right. Uh, good evening, everybody. I just realized you guys have a, have a big agenda tonight, so I'll just go over a few things. One is there will be, for businesses, they're making some modifications to the state. Here's money that will be, we already talked about them and put them out there, but it should give some better access to some money. And it will be official later this week, so Tim kind of gave me a primer on that information, but that's a big, important thing. And just right now, we have a house, kind of small house tournament going on right now that we're supporting with the charters, and that is going well. And we're testing our new software on that, and so hopefully that will get some of our members on that side some more business. And the 4th of July, we're still continuing to plan that out, just kind of get everything nailed down. So, um, and just a quick thing, it's just, again, this is a, it's basically our plan is to help mitigate the crowds that we know are already coming. Um, and just basically decreases the density of, um, the density of the people that will be here by closing the streets and giving them sites to spread out and providing opportunities and messaging to do what they need to do to stay safe. And then we're, after the 4th of July, we'll kind of question you planning for the salmon burry. So, but that's kind of just, uh... Yeah, that's kind of a quick update on things. You guys have a report if there are any questions.
Councilmember Cease has a question.
Okay, um, what, once we're starting to let the restaurants move out to the sidewalk with separated tables for the 4th of July events, what about the bars?
Uh, I couldn't quite hear you there.
I'm sorry. The restaurants have an okay to put your tables out on the sidewalks at a distance? There probably be extra tables. What about the bars?
Basically, what it is, we're applying that businesses, all businesses that are on the road closure lanes will be given access to the sidewalk in front of them. And so then, obviously, it's up to, like, those businesses to make sure they're complying with any regulations. And I know that there have been, um, some easing on those regulations so that way it actually helps even businesses like bars to be able to buy things in a safe manner. So, um, yeah, so I'm not fully informed on what that means to those businesses, but we're just providing access to all businesses to... but we're just providing access to all businesses to, um, to move out of the sidewalk.
Councilmember Bucklon?
I think just to answer your question, councilmember Sees, to Jason, if I could, is that, that's a separate permit, that's, um, you need to apply for by AMCO because it's outside of your normal service area, which are different restrictions? So, that's not, so I don't think that's something that the chamber-
Can I get it?
Can, yeah, they wouldn't, you know.
Okay.
And if that's okay, Jason, or not?
It's fine, I've just been asked.
So, maybe just to clarify, Jason, nothing under what you're doing would restrict any, um, businesses such as bars of going outside, they would just have to be more aware of their own permits that they have to obtain?
Yes, correct, and, and, yeah, it'll just depend, because I know they're actually like easing some of those restrictions right now, or there's, there's talk of them easing them very soon, um, and so I don't, yeah, we don't know fully what that means, but yeah, that's correct.
Great. And just so the public knows, I do see in your report that, um, you are getting messaging, um, out about the 4th of July to any visitors that might be coming, or to encourage visitors to come here and then act responsibly?
Yeah, it's more, um, we're definitely going to be providing messaging to act responsibly. We're trying to, it's a fine line to like get the word out and yet not advertise at the same time, and so we're trying to walk that line, um, well, so.
Thank you. Councilmember Sees?
I just have one more thing, and I'm, I'm sure that you'll be corrected. Under the member promotional support, after this for Seaview, would you put in their Seaview Community Health Center? It's not called just Seaview.
Oh, Seaview Community Services.
Or Services, okay, oh, yeah, that's right. Would you put the full name in, please?
Uh, yeah, sure.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions for the chamber director? Thanks, Jason.
Are you there?
Yep. Oh, thanks, Dale.
Um, my question is, and I just wanted to make sure that, um, we're going to be continuing on, uh, as planned for the Seward Silver Salmon Derby?
Yeah, yeah, everything is, um, go as normal for that, um, and in fact, in fact, like the software that we have now actually makes it so that it's just, uh, we can do tickets and it will just decrease, kind of, it'll enable us to kind of, um, associate all of that with your social distancing, and, and, uh, so, yeah, everything is a go for the Silver Salmon Derby.
Okay, thank you.
And when does the how it derby end?
Uh, it ends on the 30th, so.
Great, thank you. Um, anything else? Thank you, count, or thank you, chamber director.
Thanks, Jason.
Yeah.
Next on the agenda is the famous Jesse Sweat here for the Cook Inlet Aquaculture Association Report. Mr. Sweat.
Well, a lot of names, but names aren't on the list.
Welcome, thank you for being here today.
I'm Jesse Sweat, I live outside the city of Seward, uh, I've been representing the cooking and agriculture, the city of Seward with Cook Inlet for four years now, and-
Yeah.
My term was up a year ago, it was kind of a little oversight, but, uh, so anyway, I'm going to step down now and let somebody else take that. They're going outside in the wintertime quite a bit, and they had most of the meetings in the wintertime, so somebody should represent the city of Seward there. Um, I think I've done pretty good here in the last four years. If any indications, the red salmon cross the bay, it seems half the state is here trying to catch them. Uh, forecast look pretty good, uh, I see in the paper today we're going up to limit to 12 fish mountain. So, this, on the weekends, it's, this town is kind of a zoo, so. But anyway, I'll step down on that, and, uh, thank you. Any questions?
No, thank you for your-
Oh, somebody's got to ask something.
Ask you another question.
Cheryl? Oh, I can't ask.
Not about you. That's what you got here, I want to talk about something else.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jesse.
So, Madam Clerk, it sounds like we need to get that advertised, and a certificate for the long-lasting thank you from Mr. Sweat.
Here, uh, excuse me, one more thing-
Yes, sir.
-on that is, I've been trying to get a little more advertising, basically saying that these are basically atrium fish, aquaculture fish, that they're provided for the public, and so if you guys could help on your signage a little bit, would help. Um, I've got a few other issues, uh, let's say, though, I'm trying to get more red salmon in the grouse lake, that run has kind of been depleted over the years, so that's on the list, uh, we can make some changes on the net pins to get faster whales. We've been towing net pins out to thumbsco, we kind of not have all the fish eat before they leave. So, anyway, yeah, the whole country's doing pretty darn good, and they seem pretty happy, so, but if you guys want to advertise a little more, it'd be appreciated.
Great, thank you very much. Next on the agenda is presentations, animal shelter presentation by Jackie Wild and Petra Slatter Smith.
I think Jackie is there too, but, um, thank you, city council, city manager, and city planner for the opportunity to present, um, the design of the new animal shelter. Um, my name is Petra Slatter Smith, I'm the architect of Noom Design, and, um, I worked closely mainly with Jackie on, on, um, the concept design that you see, or had a hopefully a chance to look at. Are we going to see this at all, uh, on the big screen, or just, okay. Um, just the background, and maybe I do this, can you hear me, with the mask? Yes, what's going on? The current city animal shelter, known as the LS Picket, to an animal shelter, is absolutely in the need of replacement, and, uh, as you know, the city council passed a resolution last May, no, May 18th, sorry, and recommended a new facility to be located on lot 6A2 Ford Raymond subdivision with replat number three located at 605 Sea Line Avenue. The lot is owned by the city and currently supports a number of public uses, including a baseball field, um, electrical utility warehouse, and substation, and two municipal water wells. Um, part, it's a part of a replat exercise, um, that is also under contract with one of the survey companies, um, and the civil engineer we're working with. Um, the new animal shelter will be operated by the city of Seward. Um, just a quick, uh, synopsis on the existing site, the area is an industrial site to the east that borders also natural park like surrounding. The site for the new Seward Animal Shelter is located between the city, uh, electric utility warehouse to the east and the Kinnaburra public parkland to the west. It was really important in the design decision to actually pay attention to these two neighbors, because for me, there is, one is like a really industrial area that is not really pleasing, um, for, for public use, and on the other hand, we have a park-like setting. A public water pump house, which requires a 200 feet setback is located to the south. In addition, large spruce trees identified in surveys will require careful attention to avoid disturbance and tree vulnerability. So, um, we basically followed, uh, current adopted code by the city, the, it's a 2012 IVC International Building Code, as well as the standard for, um, shelters, um, that were recommended together with the nonprofit organization SOS, that kind of put us on the right track there, as well as it's designed around the 2012 International Energy Code that we're following. The site design is, um, the location for the project is ideal for the function considered in our opinion, um, but to be honest, the site is super tight, the city probably didn't even understand by going out with the RFP what it meant, but we dig in, we have basically, um, the water well restrictions, the 200 feet being away from it, as well as, um, the drainage swell that kind of borders the existing pedestrian path to the west. Um, you can see that on the site plan, I mean, that's where I was like. Um, then, um, the visitor will access from Sea Line Avenue, and one of the early, uh, design decisions was actually to try to push the building as close as to Sea Line Avenue to reduce civil costs, because basically electrical and all the water, everything comes from, from the north, from Sea Line Avenue, and, uh, civil costs are actually one of the, the big chunks of money in this, for any building. So, we reduced the driveway, we put the parking close to, to Sea Line Avenue, and, um, a concrete retaining wall that defines the parking area leads to the centrally located entry that also functions as the lobby and office, and guides the visitor through what I call the heart of the facility, which is really just the office and welcoming area, um, towards the park to the west. So, we designed the animal shelter to create better conditions for the animals, resulting in a better re-socialization and adoption process, a good working environment for employees, and a friendly atmosphere for visitors, making it attractive to visit the shelter. These are, you know, main goals of this project. We proposed on an architectural design shaped as a light pavilion there softly in the landscape, and that's mainly because, uh, we want to maintain as many trees in this park-like setting as we can. The pavilion opens towards the surrounding, resulting in an, an experience of light and nature for the users of the building, and at the same time inviting the people passing by to visit the shelter, learn about animals, and to note, maybe bring one home. Uh, the facility is 3,500 square feet large, and it's broken into three components. If you look at the floor plan, they're kind of indicated in three colors. The gray color is basically what, what I call the heart, it's really the office, it's the lobby, it's everything, and to the north, you have, um, the animal support, and to the south, you have what I call the animal housing part. So, um, it's broken, it can be basically also, um, heated separately depending on the use. Um, the central lobby is, uh, is, uh, it prevents the crossover of sound and odors, um, because it separates the two functions. Um, the rest of the facility can be secured after hours, for example, too, like if you want to open up the lobby for educational purpose, you don't have to allow any people to go into, uh, the support area, which houses like what is, uh, purpose room, quarantine, the clinic part, um, all those things. The animal housing part is really just where, where the kennels are, it's designed for eight kennel, large dog kennel areas, but we also talking about that those, uh, eight kennel areas could be divided, uh, in two, so it can even, in emergency situations, can have more animals, um, occupied in there. We were specifically looking at earthquake situations, what happens if, if we have an emergency situation, how can we make the facility even accommodate more than that? Um, the, it was brought up in the comments, there is right at the corner, at the public corner, a pet wash station designed, which is actually separated from the main facility. It could function for additional income, and it, but it also can be basically secured separately, so there's no, no issue in terms of security. There's also a garage that was part of the, uh, RFP, like, um, so that the control, animal control person can actually bring, uh, an animal into the facility without, uh, potentially infecting other animals, and from there we can directly go into the quarantine. Um, I don't specifically go into the specific square footage, but you can ask me a question, it's, it's all laid out for, uh, uh, barrier-free environment, ADA accessible. I see this main lobby, the front office, as a great opportunity to create, um, an educational environment for, for the city, in the close proximity to the schools. It, it has an open feel, as you can see in these images, and, yeah, these images too, like, um, it's not a lot of, a lot of money you're spending to create a space that gets light in, it feels kind of inviting, and it has a huge window towards a pet deduction kind of, uh, room. Um, it all helps to, we don't, we don't want to house animals, we want to find new homes for the animals. So, to create a, an inviting environment was always, uh, the goal for the city, for the city manager and the city planner to, to work on a design that make that happen. Um, yeah, like natural daylight and all the other things. Um, we are proposing on sustainable building materials, um, it is an animal shelter, it needs wear and tear, it's kind of like a big deal, you, the city doesn't want to, we have to invest in the beginning to have less long-term operational costs, and that just means concrete floors, indoor heat, it's, it's all these things that just, we, we need for this kind of type of facility. Um, we're proposing on metal siding, and, uh, uh, yeah, and like, we have to conform to the energy code anyway, as a new facility, so there's certain things we have to do just from that perspective. Um, if you have any question, I'm then happy to answer them.
Other questions? Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm not sure which way, is this Sea Line in this here?
So, um-
If the parking lot is from Sea Life Center, or from Sea Line?
Yes, this is Sea Line, the drive comes in, there's a better graphic, so this first graphic, right here.
Oh, that's-
So, it's like this, this, like this.
Oh, so this is not, this is the park that's over by the utilities?
Uh, no, the utilities, this is the, this is the-
But it's not this side at all?
This is the warehouse up here, and then this is, so that the outdoor dog is away from the school.
Okay, that's the thing.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
To the south, because that's, again, we have to place parking somewhere, and like the decision to, to have the least amount of civil costs is to push it towards the north, and then have the facility actually open up towards the south.
So, I guess I'm at the point where, when we had the Jesse Lee home presentation, we had a nice Jesse Lee home presentation, and then we had to have follow-ups. So, what would administration like us to do following this presentation?
Jackie, did you want to address that? She's still there.
Madam Mayor, council, uh, tonight's presentation was brought to you so that you were aware of what the final plan was and design, and we will be bringing forward a resolution for the court.
Okay, that sounds good. So, do you need us any direction from us this evening?
No, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Yeah, great, thank you. Thank you for your, and thank you for everything that SOS has been working pretty tirelessly on this, and it sounds like city manager and admin have been doing a great job working with that organization, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Um, next-
Thank you, Mayor, council.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chair.
Next on the agenda is, um, public hearings. Um, first, I, the one and only public hearing item is emergency ordinance 2020-007. Uh, title into the agenda, please, and do the mention.
Emergency ordinance 2020-007, requiring individuals to wear protective facial coverings when within six feet of individuals outside their household, except when certain exemptions are met, or individuals are eating, drinking, or giving or receiving services that cannot be performed while wearing a facial covering.
Thank you, do we have a motion in a second?
I'll move for the adoption of, uh, emergency ordinance 2020-007.
Second.
Thank you. So, normally at this time, we have administration give a report, but since that was brought forward by Kreitz and Osenga, councilmembers, did you want to do the lead-in for the ordinance?
Um, so, I brought this board and some emergency ordinance, um, for, uh, which will only be in, um, place for a 60-day period, um, just based on our current activity that we've been seeing here in Seward with influx of tourists. And, um, I do have a request for some wording change on the ordinance, I don't know if I can do that at this point, or if I need to wait until we have a public hearing, but...
I think it's fine to make changes now.
Um, no motions.
No motions, but you can talk about the wording changes.
Uh, in the actual, on page two of the ordinance where it actually lists out, uh, council emergency regulation number two, um, I did want to change where it said wear a cloth covering to just wear a facial covering. And then where it says covering over their nose and mouth, I wanted to add in, while in buildings that are accessible to public, i.e. businesses and public buildings, comma, and then when they cannot maintain six feet of space. And then on the- And then on the next to the last sentence, again, just striking out cloth and replacing it with facial.
Okay.
Could I ask her to repeat that?
So, that's page 24 of the agenda, and it's in Section Two, and it's in that paragraph that starts Council Emergency Regulation Number Two, and so the third line down after "mouth," what did it say?
Where it says must wear a cloth covering, I wanted to strike cloth and put facial covering.
But the part right after that.
And then where it said, if you continue, it says covering over their nose and mouth, I wanted to add in while in buildings that are accessible to the public, for example, businesses and public buildings, comma, when they cannot maintain six feet of space. And then the next to the last line there where it says cloth, again, striking cloth and putting facial.
Is there anything else you wanted to add?
That was it.
Councilmember Osenga, did you have anything to add?
No, I was just asked to co-sponsor this, and I agreed to it, to co-sponsor this. I don't really have anything else to add, I think it's pretty self-reliant for me.
And then I guess when we get there, when we make that motion in the resolution, then what would happen is on page 28, for the emergency regulation that goes out, those changes would be adopted in that. Okay, so if there's no further explanation, we'll go to public comments.
So, Lori Landstrom is our first public comment.
Hi, I'm Lori Landstrom. I live outside the city limits. I'm a healthcare provider. I've been a licensed physician assistant for over 20 years. I support Emergency Ordinance 2020-007, particularly the new wording that Councilmember Kreitz just added. Here are some facts. COVID-19 spreads via respiratory droplets, from coughing, sneezing, singing, even just talking. COVID-19 is a highly contagious illness. As of yesterday, the USA had reported over 2 million cases and over 120,000 deaths. Sure, Alaska's had low numbers, but when will our luck change? And do we really want to leave our health and economy in the hands of luck? COVID-19 causes serious illness with long-lasting effects in some people. It kills some people, but not just the elderly or those with pre-existing conditions. COVID-19 has had a terrible impact on our local and state economy. Some of our friends, neighbors, and local businesses are struggling financially because of the economic downturn. Some folks may work sick because they need their paychecks. Have you heard the new story about the Great Clips Hair Salon in Springfield, Missouri? Two hairstylists worked sick. They had over 140 clients between them. There was another 200 to 300 people in that Great Clips location during that time period. According to the Springfield Public Health Department, there were no documented, no documented cases of COVID, other than the two stylists. Why? According to that public health director, the stylists and all the clients were required to wear face masks. But I digress. There's so much we don't know about this new coronavirus. The answers change frequently as researchers learn more and more about COVID-19. Certainly, this has caused confusion, but what we now know is that you can have the virus and be contagious for up to three days before you develop symptoms, spreading it to many people along the way. Think Gerdwood, Ketchikan, outbreaks in the Anchorage care facilities. Recommendations around mask usage are confusing, but the science is not. Evidence shows that masks are extremely effective to slow the coronavirus, and may be the best available tool right now to fight it. What we now know is that the WHO, the CDC, and the State of Alaska all recommend people wear face masks as a way to slow the spread of the disease. 14 states in the U.S. require facial coverings for people outside of their homes. Additional numerous cities have enacted face mask requirements if their states haven't. Bold moves by elected officials who put public health and economy over public opinion. Some people, even in Seward, seem to equate not wearing a face mask as a symbol of freedom. It's not about freedom, it's about public health. Please listen to the science and the health experts. Do I want a mandate? Not really, but the recommendation of face mask isn't working. It's quite clear to me that many people, residents and tourists, do not wear face masks now in stores and other crowded areas. We need to protect the store clerks, the stockers, and other essential workers. They deserve this. I'll close with this, as stolen from the internet. Three reasons I choose to wear a mask. Number one, humility. I don't know if I have COVID, as it is clear that people can spread the disease before they have symptoms. Number two, kindness. I don't know if the person I am near has a kid with cancer or cares for their elderly mom. Well, I might be fine, they might not. Number three, community. I want my community to thrive, businesses to stay open, and employees to stay healthy. Keeping a lid on COVID helps us all. Let's keep Seward kind and open for business. Please support this mask ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, signed in?
Jen Appel. A lot of these are reading. Are you okay if I take my mask down just a little bit? So, we have Keith Danzel, and then Jen Appel, sorry. As a person trained in biological and chemical warfare some 45 years ago, I learned how useless cloth masks are for deterring the spread of viruses. These feel-good homemade masks, as well as N95 masks, are useless at best, and more often detrimental to the health of the person wearing it. It seems having a medical professional on the council, this person would be aware of the facts, which are readily available on professional sites. If your need to display your knowledge of what is best for your fellow citizens overwhelms you, then mandate Seward citizens and visitors not touch surfaces, as well as not touch others while in public in Seward. This is how the vast majority of any virus is contracted, by touching surfaces other infectious persons have touched, then transferring to their nose, mouth, or ears. Intense and irrational fear will have a far worse effect on people's health than will the Wuhan flu. If wearing a mask makes you feel good, then feel free to wear one, but don't tell me I must wear one to appease your opinion. Had it, over it wasn't that bad, and I am immune deficient. Keith Danzel. Next is Jen Appel. Dear Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council Members, my name is Jen Appel. I live in Seward City Limits and have lived here in Seward for 18 years. It has come to my attention that another mask ordinance is on the agenda. I want to share my reasons why this is not a good idea. No study has come out proving that cloth face coverings are effective against the virus. The New England Journal of Medicine article dated May 21, 2020, says in the beginning of paragraph two, "We know that wearing a mask outside healthcare facilities offers little, if any, protection from infection." The article goes on to discuss the use of universal masks in healthcare systems and concludes it is more of a talisman, their word, not mine, for reminding the workers of other safety measures that are more effective. Another aspect to this is that many people can't wear masks because it affects their breathing or increases their anxiety. Do we want to set up a mandate where people are put in a position to be constantly questioned about their private health issues by not having a mask on? Please also consider that during this time, every mandate that comes down feels like our rights are being stripped away from us one by one, and this is just one more. Due process of involvement from the people of the city is an important aspect of government, no matter the circumstances. This should not be a matter that is voted on by a few people in a room, but if it comes to it, should be a vote by the people. More and more is learned about mask wearing, including the fact that it can actually infect you with viruses and bacteria. It traps particles right against your nose and mouth and keeps them in a warm and moist environment where they then can grow. Even the World Health Organization does not recommend masks except for people who are actually sick or those caring for COVID patients. Think of children. How do we expect a two-year-old to keep a mask on their face and not touch their face? Or even a five-year-old? What would that look like for parents in terms of the enforcement side? Are we going to arrest a seven-year-old for non-mask compliance? And while we are on that subject, what do you think is a suitable punishment for not wearing a mask? Who will be enforcing it? I believe we can continue to follow the governor's lead in not mandating masks. He has been removing mandates, not adding them. I ask the City of Seward to follow his guidance in not adding more mandates to our city. Next is Roman Barlow. To the Seward City Council Members and Mayor Terry, I would like to start by saying thank you for your service to our community. Each and every one of you I know deal with a lot of political stress, especially in times like right now. I want you to know that there are many men and women, just like myself, praying for each and every one of you. As a citizen of Seward, Alaska, I believe that we have rights that many men and women have fought bravely and many have died for. I am not in opposition to wearing masks, if that's what people want to do, but I am in opposition in trying to force it upon people that do not believe they should have to do so. Therefore, I am sending this in to the local Seward City Council in hopes that they will be in opposition to such mandates. Also, I believe our local law enforcement officers have plenty of stress on them as it is in times like this. The last thing they need is to have to worry about something of this nature. I would like this letter read at the council meeting live on Monday night. Thank you, and God bless you all. Next is Brandon Davis. To whom it may concern, I would kindly ask that you do not pass this rule that masks would be mandatory. They are very hard to breathe in, and much more so for children. We should all have the choice to wear one or not, depending on how we feel. There's plenty of research showing that they are not effective and can also lower oxygen Next is Corinne Danzel. I strongly disagree with a few individuals, namely those city council members who think they have the right to force their views about the wearing of masks in public down everyone's throats. This is what the National Institute of Health has to say about carbon dioxide exposure. Exposure can cause suffocation by displacement of air, incapacitation and unconsciousness, headaches, vertigo, and double vision, inability to concentrate, tinnitus, seizures. Breathing in high amounts of carbon dioxide may be life-threatening. I think the NIH is far more qualified on this subject than a couple of members of our city council are. Next is Mike Little. My name is Mike Little, an 11-plus-year resident of Seward and current president of He Will Provide Food Pantry in our community. I wish to express that I am strongly against the emergency order of facial covering within six feet of another individual. I believe enforcing this is wrong and unnecessary, and our police and law enforcement are already overburdened with what they do. Our freedoms and rights have been trampled on long enough, and enough is enough. This baloney has gone on long enough. If you and those of you who wish to live in fear, go right ahead, but don't push your feelings on us. Individual responsibility and common sense, not mandated by government authority. Next is Melissa Hickey. We keep our boat docked in the Seward harbor. I have very strong feelings about the mask mandate. Not only is it a violation of the civil rights I hold dear, but it makes it uncomfortable for people who truly cannot wear a mask. There are many physical and emotional stresses related to wearing a mask. There is no science behind wearing a mask. It is unprecedented, and the results remain to be seen. Most people do not have the knowledge base or training to properly use a mask. Homemade masks are what people are using, and they offer no protection. I don't believe in the concept of doing something that doesn't make sense just to offer a false sense of security. If people are afraid for their own well-being, then by all means, wear a mask. No judgment either way. Civil rights are just that, rights. They are not privileges that can be revoked. Thank you for your time. Next is Albert and Roberta Hobbs. We are Albert and Roberta Hobbs, Seward residents. Please read aloud during the meeting and consider this public comment before you vote on Emergency Ordinance 2020-007, requiring individuals to wear protective facial coverings outside of their household. When the coronavirus, COVID-19, was considered a pandemic, and our nation followed the guidelines and mandates and alerts to flatten the curve and to make sure that our public health system was not overwhelmed, it dramatically affected all of us. As of today, there have been 12 tragic deaths, either caused with or from the coronavirus in Alaska, with an accumulated hospitalization total of 60 Alaskans. Our elected public servants, politicians, officials, said that decisions would be based on science and data. Based upon specific metrics, our state government and health officials have been following a handful of remaining mandates and alerts, and the number of deaths from the coronavirus has remained flattened, and our healthcare system remains not overwhelmed. This proposed emergency ordinance is not in line with the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, the State of Alaska, or the current federal administration, which only recommends that non-surgical face masks be worn in public. Protecting the most vulnerable of our society should be our highest priority, and that will require being responsible, and yes, wearing a mask at times, but it will also require following all the other recommended guidelines. When you are sick, follow the guidelines, practice physical distancing and personal hygiene. But will requiring wearing protective facial coverings outside of a household change these numbers? If safety is the reason, what is the underlying science or data to require individuals to wear protective facial coverings? The science and data on wearing or not wearing is still incomplete and inconclusive. With four positive cases in Seward, how has not requiring a protective facial covering outside of your household changed the total of number of cases in Seward? Living life in Seward, Alaska, or anywhere comes with risks. Every day, people die from cardiovascular diseases, cancers, respiratory diseases, lower respiratory infections, dementia, digestive diseases, suicides, accidents, and the list painfully goes on, and we are all tragically affected directly and indirectly. The number of people who have died in Alaska alone from the above-mentioned is well over 12 Alaskans over the same time period, and every death is tragic. I urge the council to follow the science and the data, follow the Governor's reopen Alaska responsibly plan, and state health guidelines, and the recommended CDC guidelines. Please vote against this proposed emergency ordinance. Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Just a quick question. How many comments do you have?
A lot.
Okay.
We don't have a time limitation on public hearings.
I understand that, I'm just asking how many there are, since we're at 11.
Yep, yep, you're right. I mean, there's no time limitation with public hearings. Under public hearing comments, there's a way for us to bunch them, but, I mean, sorry, under general citizen comments, there's, in the policies and procedures, there's an opportunity for us to bunch them with numbers, but I don't believe so under the public hearing. In under public hearings, they all have to be in...
Sure, I was just asking, I just wanted to know.
I am going to say that we're going to stick to the five-minute time period, so comments at five minutes will be...
So, next is Anna Madosik. My husband and I are lifelong Alaskans and have lived in Seward for eight years. We live just outside city limits and enjoy calling Seward our home. I grow weary of having to defend my rights as a lifelong Alaskan and citizen of the United States of America. I will continue to do so, though, as I want to see my children's freedoms kept safely intact. The new proposal for a mask mandate, quite frankly, resembles authoritarian governing. If people want to wear masks, then by all means, wear one, but when people demand other people do the same, then that is an infringement on our freedoms. If people feel unsafe, then they can choose to stay home or wear a mask. It should never be the government's job to take personal responsibility or choice away. Next is Matthew Armstrong. I do not support the emergency ordinance to require every person to wear a face mask in Seward. There is plenty of medical and scientific data to support the fact that cloth face masks do not stop people from contracting viruses and bacteria. Even the N95 mask only stops down to five microns, and the COVID has been found to be a one-micron virus bacterial issue. Cloth masks do not have an airtight seal, necessary filters, or a regulated air supply to aid in stopping any transmission or reception of a virus. in stopping any transmission or reception of a virus or bacteria. Cloth masks only stop some of the particles from a person sneezing or coughing and do not stop any of those particulates from entering into the system of other people. This is a false sense of safety and security. I fully support any person to wear what makes them feel comfortable and safe. However, I feel that our government could better spend their time and efforts in properly educating the public with scientific and medical data as opposed to feeding into the fear mongering. If people are sick, they need to take appropriate actions as they would with any flu or other virus. Either stay at home and use their remedies, or seek medical attention, whichever they see fit for themselves. Please feel free to share this email with the city council members and please feel free to read it out loud. And next is Stephanie Higgins. I am writing to voice my opposition to the Emergency Ordinance 2020-007 mandating all persons wear face masks outside of their households. While I respect every individual's choice to wear a mask or not, I believe that decision should remain just that, a choice. Even considering the influx of visitors that have flocked to our town over the past several weeks, we still have not seen an outbreak of additional COVID cases. I do not feel there are any numbers affecting our town that would justify going to this extreme. In a state that is doing its best to move forward, restore its economy, and return to semblance of normalcy, I feel like this ordinance is an unnecessary step backwards. And next is Linda Paquette, who will be giving her comments in person.
I think she already made her comments during the public comment portion.
She signed up for both of them.
Okay, thank you, Linda.
So you're not speaking again?
Sure.
So then we have John and Catherine Page. We would like to add our support in favor of the implementation of Emergency Regulation Number 2020-007. We support the requirement for all public businesses to require employees and patrons wear a mask and for masks to be worn when interacting with people in public places. If there are social gatherings where staying six feet apart is not possible, then masks should be used. There should be allowances for young children, those with documented health issues, and solo and family groups doing active activities, exercising, physical labor, et cetera. The hope is that we can establish a standard of behavior that people voluntarily do to reduce risk for all community members and visitors. In order for Seward to sustain its seasonal businesses and maintain the health and well-being of its citizens and visitors, everyone needs to do their part. The upcoming July 4 event will draw numerous visitors into our downtown area and social distancing will be impossible. As we have recently seen from other small towns, one gathering can have far-reaching consequences when attended by someone who is asymptomatic or did not quarantine as required. Please take into consideration the best solution for our community and the safety of not only the residents but the visitors to our town. Next, we have Susan Mosman. I am commenting on the ordinance regarding facial coverings in public places where you cannot maintain a six-feet distance. I am concerned with how this is worded. Is it worded this way so that a retail store can state that even though people don't maintain the social distancing, they could, so wearing facial coverings doesn't apply to them if it is passed? I have lived in Seward two years now. I have been told Alaskans help each other, that they will do the right thing. The mask issue has become something of bravery. You are brave and above the whole thing if you don't wear it, and weak and afraid if you do. It has become political. If we look at it from a scientific perspective, we need to wear the masks when we are around non-family members. Per the CDC, cloth face coverings may prevent the person wearing the mask from spreading respiratory droplets when talking, sneezing, or coughing. If everyone wears a cloth mask covering when out in public, such as going to the grocery store, the risk of exposure to SARS-CoV-2 can be reduced for the community. Since people may spread the virus before symptoms start, or even if people never have symptoms, wearing a cloth face covering may protect others around you. Face coverings worn by others may protect you from getting the virus from people carrying the virus. We need to wear cloth facial coverings. Let's show that we are Alaskans that will do the right thing. I do it for you. Please pass this ordinance so others will be encouraged to do it for those they encounter.
Next comment is from Caitlin Degrave. I support the emergency ordinance to require wearing facial coverings in Seward. I find it strange that people say they respect that I wish to wear a mask, but they will not. When wearing a mask benefits you, not me. Therefore, I am showing respect for the fact that you may be immunocompromised or be a primary caretaker for someone over 65. Of what respect is a non-mask wearer referring to, since they are putting everyone around them at higher risk? We need to be kind to each other, and more and more research is pointing to masks helping, so why not wear one in public? The worst thing that will happen is someone being uncomfortable while wearing a mask. The best case is saving someone's life. Is it not worth it? Today's superheroes don't wear capes, they wear masks. Thank you. Next is from Sue and Harold Faust. We are in strong support of Emergency Ordinance 2020-007 and ask that you vote in favor of its passing. As longtime Seward residents, we have been dismayed at the lack of consideration from many people within our community, as well as visitors from out of town regarding our personal health. Merely requesting people to please wear masks when in close quarters with other people has obviously not worked. We have even talked to the manager of Safeway, asking that they require masks on senior shopping day, only to be turned down. Seward has been very lucky so far with this virus, but the full-time summer season will soon be in full roar. I expect there to be thousands here over the Fourth of July despite the marathon race being canceled. Seward is known statewide as having a solid long-term residential population. Please show respect for us all by passing this ordinance. Next from Sarah Fink. I am against Emergency Ordinance 2020-007. U.S. citizens should never be required to wear anything on their person. Local citizens and local businesses should have freedom of choice in how they choose to navigate the COVID-19 situation. I fear mandating this emergency ordinance will set a new precedent where we will be required to wear masks for cold season, flu season, and whatever else may come our way. I will not accept that this is the norm. Life is full of risks. What are we teaching our kids? To be afraid and live in fear? Are we raising another generation of tough Alaskan kids with fortitude and strength? Or will we be teaching them to be afraid of viruses, stay home, and away from the dangerous outside world? I know there are people in our community who are immunocompromised, and I am not heartless for their situation. They have the right to stay home and wear masks if they feel they are protecting themselves. Our city is divided, and the best way to move forward is freedom of choice. There is volatility in our community. Let's do what we can to maintain peace and civility between one another. I appreciate your time on this matter, and I know it's difficult to be on council in these critical times. Okay. Next is from Maya Moriarty. So there's a packet of information that Maya Moriarty submitted. They collected 99 signatures from Seward community members in just a number of days. They've submitted, she submitted two letters, one from the local, the local people who signed the letter, and then as well, the healthcare letter that went to Governor Don Morden from over 200 healthcare workers across the state. The letter reads, Dear Seward City Council, thank you for taking precautionary measures regarding COVID-19 and encouraging masking in our community. The Seward healthcare providers, healthcare workers, and healthcare advocates who sign this letter strongly urge you, the Seward City Council, to mandate the use of masks by customers and employees and businesses open to the public, where six-foot distancing is unrealistic. Recent medical studies and real-world evidence support the use of universal masking to prevent the spread of this virus. We are concerned about the recent and rapid increase in COVID-19 case counts in Alaska. We want a healthy and robust economy in Alaska and in Seward, and a healthy economy needs healthy consumers and workers. More consumers will feel safe patronizing businesses when they know that risk of infection is reduced. We also want to avoid another lockdown, which would further harm the statewide and local economy. There is now robust scientific evidence that masks play an important role in preventing the spread of the disease, or the virus. A systematic review published June 1, 2020, in The Lancet looked at 172 studies and found the most effective way to decrease the transmission of the coronavirus included social distancing and universal mask wearing. This is a very inclusive study with the highest quality methodology and was published in one of the most respected medical journals. We can be confident in the results. We also have real-time examples of countries that adopted mask wearing and as a result, decreased viral infections. In the Czech Republic, masks were mandated in early March for anyone outside their homes. Within two weeks, they had an 80% decrease in transmission of the virus. Austria had a similar phenomenon, with a 90% decrease in infections two weeks after adopting mask mandates. Widespread mask use is so effective because viral transmission often occurs through respiratory droplets, coughs, sneezes, exhales. If people infected with the virus wear masks, these respiratory droplets are trapped in mask material. This is especially important in the case of asymptomatic carriers. In fact, up to half the people who spread the virus are infected but don't know it The takeaway is this: A sick person wearing a mask will spread fewer viral particles. A healthy person wearing a mask will have some protection from sick people around them. The combination of both people wearing masks provides the greatest amount of protection. Masks are a very low-risk intervention. Masks are safe for the vast majority of people. They are not recommended for certain groups, such as children under two years old, or some people with serious underlying wound conditions, under the advice of their clinician. There is no solid evidence for carbon dioxide buildup or mental status changes from long-term cloth mask use in the general public. Many people, like healthcare workers, use masks on a daily basis for years. Moreover, masks are available. Initially, the public was told not to wear masks in order to conserve them for medical use due to shortages. Now there are non-medical-grade masks available for the public. The use of masks is recommended by the CDC, the World Health Organization, and by our own state. Unfortunately, this recommendation appears insufficient to affect the behavioral change needed to protect Alaskans, limit viral spread, and successfully launch our economy. In the United States, as of June 5, the majority of states and District of Columbia have faced mask requirements. Currently, in Alaska at least, Cordova and Juneau have passed the mask mandates. Cordova passed their local mandate in the absence of any local cases in their community. Currently, they are still without a local case. As we've seen, if universal masking in businesses is not mandated, it becomes difficult for individual businesses to ask customers to wear them. This is especially concerning in light of the recent rise in case count statewide and on the Kena Peninsula. At the beginning of the pandemic in March, cases were clustered in just a few communities in Alaska. Now we are seeing cases widespread throughout Alaska. Without a mandate for mask wearing in our community, we as a community are less vulnerable, and as we have seen recently on the Kena Peninsula, once a case is identified in a community, the number of cases rapidly increases within that community.
And next, Albie Tatum will be giving her comments in person.
Thank you. I reside outside of city limits but work and volunteer inside city limits. I'm sure it comes as no surprise that I am speaking to you tonight, fully supporting the ordinance mandating facial coverings in Seward. I'm a nurse and a volunteer EMT here in Seward, and from the beginning of this pandemic, I have been dedicated to educating myself and those around me in the healthcare community on this novel virus for one purpose: to do what I can to assist keeping the people of Seward safe. This is my home. This is where my parents raised me, and this is where I chose to come back to. Tonight, I'm not here to talk about the medical science that supports facial coverings, and the evidence is there for all the naysayers. Tonight, I'm just an educated citizen who believes in science. Tonight, I'm just a human being, and I'm here to say shame on all of you who refuse to wear facial coverings in public buildings. Not the ones who physically can't, but the ones who vehemently refuse. Shame on you who have bought into the political divisiveness of facial coverings instead of seeing it for what it is: a humble gesture to protect your fellow citizens and those most vulnerable. Facial coverings shouldn't be political. This is an issue of whether or not you care about those around you. This is not taking away freedoms, it's giving freedoms back to those that are most vulnerable. It's telling those highest individuals that you matter. The concept of herd immunity for COVID-19 does the opposite. Advocating for herd immunity during a pandemic of this magnitude tells those who are most vulnerable that they are expendable. If mandating facial coverings in buildings open to the public allows even 10 of our local residents, who are high-risk if they contract COVID-19, the ability to go to the store, to the fish house, to a restaurant, and be more protected, why wouldn't we do it? Local businesses currently have to choose to mandate masks in their establishment, therefore protecting themselves and their workers. Other larger retailers like Costco have done this, and nationwide backlash was significant. I can only imagine how that made smaller businesses feel about doing the same thing. This shouldn't have to be a choice. Businesses shouldn't have to choose between their health and safety and the viability of their business. Seward shouldn't have to wait for Safeway's parent company to mandate masks for all of their stores nationwide. The city council can do this for the community and take the burden off of their shoulders. This wouldn't be the first time that the government has made something a law to protect its citizens. Seat belts, helmets, speed limits, how about smoking? Smokers cannot smoke in public buildings, restaurants, airplanes. This law was not passed to protect the smokers and their rights. This was passed to protect the public from the smokers and the long-term effects of secondhand smoke. The only thing that makes this different is that pre-symptomatic and asymptomatic COVID spreaders don't light up, don't have an odor, or a cloud of smoke around them. The risk with COVID is invisible. Smokers can smoke in their homes, in their cars, on the sidewalks, while walking their dogs, at the park, around their family members, but not in enclosed places like buildings where it would affect others. Nobody complains about that being a law, and I would venture to speculate that the public outrage would be significantly more if we were trying to allow that practice to return because of their rights. Today, U.S. council members received numerous letters of support, including a group letter from healthcare providers, healthcare workers, and advocates, and that included 99 signatures and was just mostly read by Brenda. In addition, individual healthcare providers from every healthcare entity in Seward, Providence, Seward Community Health Center, Chugatchmew, Glacier Family Medicine, and Lacuna Family Medicine have voiced their support for this mandate. These are the people Seward should be listening to. These are the people who have been and continue to be at the front lines of this in our community. We as a community may never know if we've overreacted to COVID-19, but we will know if we underreact. This simple measure will save lives in our community, and even if it's just one, isn't that enough? Thank you.
Next is Cheryl Weist. I am a resident of Moose Pass and do not live in Seward. However, since Seward is the closest community for shopping and entertainment, I do feel that my opinion should be stated. I do not feel like it's the government's responsibility, city, state, or federal, to implement these restrictions on our freedoms. As responsible adults, I think the decision to wear face coverings should be up to each individual. I don't believe that our country should have been shut down for this virus. However, the American people did go along with the shutdown to flatten the curve so our hospitals would not be overwhelmed. That goal was accomplished. The goal was never to keep people from getting sick or dying, but merely to slow down the progression. Now that the country is starting to reopen, government officials feel that it's their job to implement further restrictions. I think that we, the people, are fully competent of taking care of ourselves. Even though Seward is the closest community to my residence, if this ordinance is passed, I will have no problem taking my business to another community. Also, I would like to know how you plan to enforce this ordinance. Next is Carol Griswold. I support the intent of the ordinance to protect the health and safety of the public, but this ordinance is inadequate, ineffective, confusing, unreasonable, and unenforceable. As written, it will not serve the intent. Instead of targeting the public in outdoor spaces where the danger is lower, why not focus on indoor activities of retail businesses and other places the public uses, such as city hall, animal shelter, the post office, transportation, such as shuttles, taxis, buses, et cetera? Staff and employees should be required to wear adequate facial coverings or maintain at least six-feet distancing, use shields, frequently and thoroughly wash hands, frequently sanitize surfaces accessed by the public, such as counters or face finds. Occupancy should also be limited based Occupancy should also be limited based on the square footage of the public space. Customers should be required to wear adequate face masks. No masks, no entry. Healthcare providers and clients should be required to follow even more stringent requirements. I believe most do, but this is the time to require and enforce it. The best protection is physical distancing of at least six feet indoors and outdoors, and frequent and thorough hand washing. Gatherings of 20 people or fewer outdoors should also be encouraged but not subject to fines. Are the police tasked with inspecting and enforcing this ordinance? If it is rewritten to focus on businesses, then it will be enforceable. As written, it is unenforceable and unreasonable. The ordinance exempts children under the age of four, but the CDC—who and state—recommend exempting those under the age of two. Why the discrepancy? According to a Google search, the CDC is about to make an announcement regarding the use of cloth face coverings. Be sure to incorporate this guidance. Please instead focus on enforcement of preventative methods in retail businesses, government, and healthcare facilities. Continue to emphasize correct methods of hand washing, the importance of physical distancing and not touching one's face, and correct use and kind of masks. Please add update of Seward Parks and Rec Master Plan to PNC priority list. I have many concerns about the flawed animal shelter design which I emailed to you. Next is Angela Hammer. In regards to the ordinance of mandating masks in Seward, it is my understanding the Seward City Council is trying to keep this a secret so they can pass it without the knowledge of the general public. This is criminal politics. Once again, the mayor and the Seward City Council are trying to take away our civil rights, our civil liberties, and our freedom. They are doing this in a nefarious and criminal manner in an attempt to be in control. They are saying the majority of the people in town want this. I haven't talked to one person who does. I think we're past being told what we can and cannot do when it comes to the ability to make decisions regarding our own health. Wear a mask if you want to. Don't wear a mask if you don't want to. I am deeply disturbed by an email that was sent to undisclosed recipients and how the sender is requesting the email to be sent to like-minded people. She also did not want this on social media. Very, very underhanded and wrong on so many levels. People who do these kinds of things are not doing it for the people; they are in it for themselves. Criminals, to say the least. You know what the Nazis told the Jews? "This is for your safety," as they loaded train car upon train car. Seward City Council and the mayor need to stick to the business of the city. Stop trying to dictate the lives of Seward residents; that is not what we want. You were elected to run the city and not rule the citizens. I would be very embarrassed to be a part of this as it seems you were just out to push an agenda because you failed to get it passed earlier. We are past the time where any new little laws or civil orders will be respected. We are now in a new age of patriotic disobedience. Don't push your luck. And next is Deanna Chesher. As a lifelong Alaskan and an advocate of many things in Seward, I must share my strong disapproval of the proposal to mandate masks in the beautiful, previously friendly town of Seward. My reasons are these. The response to this so-called pandemic has been a major overkill from the beginning. The death rate of 12 is so much less than the flu, it is mind-boggling that Alaskans ever bought the lie to begin with. Of those 12 deaths, two were not in the state, dropping our actual total to 10. One of those 10 was my neighbor who was 90 years old, riddled with cancer, and in full kidney failure, refusing dialysis. The hospital tested him for COVID, claimed he tested positive, though he had no symptoms according to his caregivers, and not one of his caregivers or visitors tested positive. Which begs the question: Did he really have it, or was it a false positive test? It happens. And the 12th death with COVID—notice they are not even claiming it's from COVID anymore—was also elderly with several challenging underlying conditions as well. Who knows about the other eight people? We need herd immunity. The CDC—who and many others—can't seem to make up their minds whether masks are good, bad, necessary, or even remotely effective. I and only I am responsible for my health. You and only you are responsible for yours. People with HIV, AIDS, hepatitis, TB, and other diseases don't have contact tracing and don't require people to wear masks. Why is it even being considered for this virus? More people are dying due to the shutdown than from this virus, especially in our state of Alaska. I work in the mental health field. I've seen it firsthand: homelessness, depression, suicide, alcohol and drug relapses, and alcohol and drug overdoses. Our elders in nursing homes are refusing to eat due to severe depression from not being able to see their families. Some have lost any will to live at all. Some are severely depressed, and then some don't understand why they have been abandoned. And I also know people whose health has been compromised and some who have died because they're afraid to go to the hospital and lose all contact with their family. People with cancer didn't get help earlier, and now their cancer is too far gone. My own husband was refused help from his doctor for his asthma and bronchitis and told to go home and take long hot showers or baths. I kid you not, his allergies often turn into sinus infections, which then go into his lungs if left untreated. His doctor knows this, and yet he was refused to be seen or treated due to the fear of this virus. People need other people. I need to see your face, see your smile. The hospitals aren't remotely overwhelmed. The purpose of the shutdown was to flatten the curve, not to prevent infection. Are you going to do this for every harmful virus or bacteria or health threat that comes around? Because there will be others. Are you, as a city that is dependent on tourism, seriously going to continue the vast government overreaches that have been put in place by people who are determined to shut down all sources of income for the inhabitants because of fear of a virus? Alaskans are better than this. We're tough. Please lead the continued government fear-mongering and government involvement into the lives of the people, and let us live freely without fear, without masks, without undue and damaging government overreach—which has crippled our economy and destroyed commerce and lives due to a lack of income and jobs. Next is Miranda Stitt. Hello. To whom it may concern, it has been brought to my attention over the past few days that there are some who would like to again make wearing a mask a mandate. Normally, this mandate would not bother me, and I would happily keep my head down and walk on by the subject. However, this past week, I was able to make some personal observations, and this—I will add—was before the news about the mandate came out. One, I was able to observe several healthy adults wearing masks that have lower-than-normal O2 levels. How do I know this? Because when I put the monitor on them, they stated that it was lower than normal. Assuring them it could be a bad battery, I tried a different O2 monitor and had the same low reading of 96 to 97. After coming home and changed the battery in my monitor, I again used it the next day and had the same 96 readings. One patient stated that if they took their mask off, it would go up, and I said that we could try that. They removed their mask, and within 15 to 20 seconds, their O2 levels were up to 98. After this, I would test the patient's O2 levels before and after they took their masks off. With them on, all levels were 96 to 97. After removing them and waiting 15 to 30 seconds, their levels went up to 98 to 100. I am a young, healthy nonsmoker with no history of smoking or asthma, and I have never been around anyone who smokes or vapes. However, this past week, after wearing a mask for four days straight, only removing periodically, I discovered that after the second day, I had chest pain and hurt to take a deep breath. The third day, I was still struggling to take a deep breath, and after trying to run a one-fourth mile, I couldn't hardly breathe at all. Two days after, I am still struggling for deep breaths if I am trying to exercise. Yes, I know, these are not scientific recordings and only personal observations. My question to you is: If you are so concerned about people's health that you literally try and keep this mandate a secret, then are you concerned about all aspects of people's health? As a healthcare provider, do you know that your patient's O2 levels are lower with their masks on? And as a healthcare provider—as I know at least one of you are—then you know that people with COPD or asthma could have underlying health issues if they have to wear a mask for any period of time. Also, if you do pass this mandate, then I feel it only medically irrelevant so that you educate people on what could happen if they are indeed made to wear a mask. There are several studies that have been done that state wearing a mask can reduce O2 levels, and more and more people are realizing this. This information is useful due to the fact that some people are panicking and thinking they have the virus because of low O2 and trouble breathing, and they are getting tested unnecessarily when all they really have to do is stop wearing the mask. Also, no, we have no active or new cases despite the fact we have people coming from all over Alaska to visit our town. It was stated in an email that Homer was a hotspot for the virus, and a few people I know are for this mandate and wrote letters were in fact in Homer over the weekend. And yet, nothing in Seward or in Whittier, where they also have a huge flow of traffic and visitors, and yet no cases. So my conclusion is that people should be free to choose whether or not they want to wear a mask, and they should also be educated on what can happen if they do, and that having underlying health issues could be made worse by wearing one. This virus has a 98% survival rate, and yet people are scared out of their minds because every symptom for allergies, COPD, asthma, and the common cold are all said to be linked to the virus. And we as healthcare providers and city council members should be spreading education and facts and not fear or personal agendas to make people do what we think is right. If you feel better with a mask, then wear one, but do not force people to do the same unless you are prepared to also educate them on the truth despite what you want knowing that it could cause them to not wear one. All I'm asking is that you take into consideration all aspects of people's health and not just your own personal agendas. Thank you for your time. Next is Jennifer Carr. I would like to testify in support of Ordinance 2020-007 concerning the wearing of masks while in public places in Seward. Wearing a mask is simply a common courtesy to our fellow Americans. I urge people to not consider it a political statement, but a simple act that can dramatically affect the spread of this virus. Maybe there were mixed messages about masks early on in the epidemic, but we now know masks are effective. Our healthcare workers, essential workers, and police are expected to wear them. Why can't we support them and try to get this uptick in cases to go back down? Yes, masks can get hot, steam up your glasses, and rub your ears, but why not choose to protect the weaker among us and those who are required to be out in public? You cover your mouth when you sneeze, and you can do this too. And next is Kristin Fleming. To the people elected to represent our community of Seward, Alaska, I've lived in this community for 23 years. I chose to start a business in Seward. I chose to raise my family in Seward. I support local businesses. I pay all local and federal taxes. I pay high utilities on my business and personal property year-round. I am a law-abiding citizen of Seward, Alaska. It is not within your duties as city council to mandate a face covering in public. It will not only cause more health issues than you're willing to look into, but it will further cripple our economy. It will cause people to stay away from our city. It will cause people to remain soaked in unnecessary fear. It will cause people to leave this town permanently. My health choices are not your decision; they are mine. Did you abolish alcohol when people die from its effects daily? Remove sugar from the shelves when people started to get diabetes and suffer daily in Seward? What about cigarettes? Still allowing them to be sold here even though people have lung cancer in our city? What about stopping cycling or car driving when people have been killed in collisions in our town? I'm not suggesting any of these things be done; they seem absurd. But not as absurd as mandating me to cover my face, causing myself to become asphyxiated for 10 hours a day, six days a week, because I work in a place that is serving the public of Seward. I am a server, a modern-day servant, serving the public of this city every day. I've served several of you recently. I will stand up for our rights and speak against your idea when it is unlawful. People are fully capable of weighing the outcomes and deciding how they choose to protect themselves and manage their own health. I do not support your motion to mandate face cloth wearing in public. I'll end with a quote: "Our ability to make individual decisions and use sound judgments should never become the responsibility of our government." Charlie Pierce, Kenai Peninsula Borough Mayor, June 19th, 2020. And next is Brandon Tatum.
Yeah, do you need it? Yes, council member Butts?
I'd like to make a motion. We make a 10-minute recess while we continue this.
Yeah. Does everyone else want to take a recess?
Yes.
Okay. Let's take a recess at 9:03, back at 9:15.
Wait a minute. My hangup...
................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................ ...[1671.13] So next was Brandon Tatum. He texted and he will not be able to make it in person. So we will be moving on to Doyle Bruchner.
Good evening, City Council. First of all, I want to thank you for the job you all do amidst these challenging times. I do not envy the many decisions you must have to make on a daily basis. This letter to, is to, this letter is to express my disagreement with the face mask mandate under consideration tonight. My concern when this came up in May was that the mandate under consideration was not well worded or narrowly tailored to be legally defensible. I will say that in this newest version, you have at least fixed some of those issues for which I am thankful. However, my concerns now lie in other areas. First of all, this mandate infringes upon the freedom of the people to lead their own lives without undue restrictions from the government. This freedom is guaranteed in the U.S. Constitution and the First Amendment. I would argue that the freedom to take a breath of fresh air without being restricted by a piece of cloth over your mouth is fundamental to the freedoms enumerated in the Constitution. The science regarding the effectiveness of homemade or cloth face masks in preventing the spread of disease is ambiguous at best. There are studies that can be read both in support and against it. It is telling that the World Health Organization does not recommend face mask coverings. The following is directly from their website. Non-medical fabric masks are being used by many people in public areas, but there's been limited evidence on their effectiveness? And who does not recommend their widespread use among the public for control of COVID-19? However, for areas of widespread transmission with limited capacity for implementing control measures and especially in settings where physical distancing of at least one meter is not possible, such as on public transport, in shops, or in other confined or crowded environments? Who advises governments to encourage the general public to use non-medical fabric masks? Seward is not an area of widespread transmission. In fact, we are just the opposite as we have been virtually untouched by the coronavirus thus far. It is incomprehensible to me why the Seward City Council would presume to know better than the World Health Organization when it comes to wearing face masks. It is not just the who that has not recommended face mask mandates. Both the federal and state governments to which Seward belongs are not mandating face masks. What is the reason that we feel the need to align ourselves with New York, New Jersey, Los Angeles County, and other extremely populated or hard-hit areas? Did we not all choose to live in a relative remote setting specifically not to get caught up in a lot of the drama of the big city? Let's trust our neighbors to make the best decision about what is right for them and their family. For the city of Seward to take sides in what is a very unsettled question will do nothing but cause further dissension among our citizens. The economy of Seward is already hanging by a thread as a result of travel restrictions and general uncertainty and fear in our nation at present. Adding those who would have otherwise been willing to come spend their money in Seward is untenable for our business owners and their employees. If the city council chooses to pass this face mask mandate tonight, the only conclusion will be that you no longer have the best interest of Seward residents in view, that something else is driving your decisions or clouding your judgment. While I don't want people to get sick of the coronavirus any more than the next person, it feels like reason has been tossed out the window and paranoia is now ruling the day. I ask you to please stop, take a deep breath with a face mask if you must, take a slow look around at your neighbors, and determine for yourself whether or not the coronavirus is ravaging our community. Then with a clear head, make your decision on the face mask mandate. What we really need is a city council that leads us through this national crisis with level heads. You all should be the ones with calm heads that people who are scared can take their cues from. Please do not make mandates based on the fear of the unknown or what could possibly happen. This only promulgates panic. Again, I do realize that you have a very tough job and that you hear lots of voices, loud voices, from all sides of an issue. Thank you for leading our community. I will be praying for you to be strong and courageous in these trying times. God bless you all.
Next is Kristy Willene.
As a retired teacher and 31-year resident of Seward, I have spent decades involved in our community on multiple levels, both as an employee and as a volunteer. Seward is my home. Home is a place where respect and caring for everyone is imperative. Respect and care are evident in our actions, which will always stand the test of time long after our words fade away. Wearing face masks through this current COVID-19 pandemic is not about taking individual rights away from anyone. It is about caring for everyone. Please take the correct course of action to keep all of our community members safe and require the wearing of face masks until it's safe to no longer do so.
Next is Sarah Bruchner.
As a person required to wear a face mask for work, I experience unnatural fatigue within two hours of arrival to work in spite of the fact that I arrive well-rested and well-nourished to start my shift. I genuinely believe that the face mask inhibits my natural flow of oxygen, causing me to inhale more carbon dioxide. My job is strenuous, requiring me to climb and descend multiple flights of stairs, often carrying items with me. The fatigue I am experiencing is uncommon for me as I am fit and accustomed to physical labor of this nature. Please do not pass this mandate. It will only serve to reduce further my and many others' quality of life in Seward. We do not need this.
Next is Wendy Milligan.
Dear City Council, I am both disheartened and surprised that the issue of mandatory face masks for the general public is needlessly being addressed again. Are we paying attention to the actual science or the pseudoscience about which many medical professionals are claiming to be experts? When looking for the supposed growing scientific evidence that face masks prove to be effective in any manner of preventing transmission, you will find an abundance of words like "may," "might," "inconclusive," and "possibly." Such unconvincing hyperbole is no basis for public policy. I implore you to read the article I will link at the end. It details 16 facts with links to the multiple scientific studies and commentary by scientists and research doctors. It includes info such as fact number six. Science shows masks are ineffective to halt the spread of COVID-19, and the who recommends they should only be worn by healthy people if treating or living with someone with a COVID-19 infection. There are no less than five studies, articles supporting this conclusion. The linked article also includes fact number four. Emerging science shows no spread of COVID-19 in the community, as stated by Professor Streik from the University of Bonn. There's no significant risk of catching the disease when you go shopping. Severe outbreaks of the infection were always a result of people being closer together over a longer period of time. Finally, fact number three. People infected with COVID-19 who are asymptomatic, which is most people, do not spread COVID-19. It can be difficult for pseudoscientists to say definitively if asymptomatic spread is possible because asymptomatic individuals are rarely tested. Thankfully, there was an actual study done, and after extensive contact tracing of 455 people connected with an asymptomatic individual, exactly zero people were infected. The author of this entire article concluded with this statement. "You now share my burden in knowing the facts about lockdown lunacy. You, Seward City Council, also now know the truth. It's not based on may or might pseudoscience. It's based on solid data." All of it is available for you to read to yourself. And now you have the burden of making a decision that despite its unlikely popularity with many people in this town, needs to be based on facts, not fear or supposition. Do you have the courage to read and study the information from the real experts and vote accordingly on this mandate?
Next up is Carol Tallman.
My comments directly, my comments directly relate to the proposed mandate to require the wearing of masks in Seward to thwart the spread of COVID-19. I am in no way opposed to wearing a mask in public. In fact, I choose to wear one in public spaces or whenever I am within six to eight feet of others. I choose to not wear one when I am outside and not sharing direct space with others. If a business that I choose to visit requires a mask, I wear a mask or choose not to go if I don't have one handy. While I'm not completely convinced that masks protect the wearer, I acknowledge that they might protect or cause others to feel more comfortable in my presence. I appreciate it when others also wear a mask and keep a good distance from me in enclosed areas. That being said, I am not in favor of a mandate requiring the wearing of masks within city limits of Seward. A mandate implies enforcement. I would assume that our police officers have other duties to perform that might be of higher importance. Citizen enforcement is way outside my comfort zone. I take the creation of laws very seriously, and I hate the idea of our city government making the leap to create a mandate in an effort to control the actions of citizens. Our local enforcement of the laws and ordinances that already exist is inconsistent at best. I think it is advisable for our local health professionals to continue to educate citizens about the wearing of masks. Stores and businesses could insist as their own policy that patrons wear masks or be turned away. It is only prudent that any open business evaluate, establish, and enforce their own policy and rules for customers. But for our local government to craft a mandate which exceeds state or federal law is neither truly enforceable or necessary, in my opinion.
And next is Kelly Baker.
Dear Seward City Council, this letter is in support of City Council Emergency Regulation Number Two, which is coming up for discussion and a vote on June 22nd, 2020. Of the population served at the North Star Health Clinic in Seward, approximately 47% meet one or more of the CDC's high-risk criteria for severe illness if infected by the virus. An emergency order mandating wearing masks in public will help to protect our most vulnerable populations served. The use of face masks by the public, together with social distancing and hand washing, prevents the transmission of coronavirus and saves lives. It is now known people with the virus can transmit the virus without even knowing they're infected, which puts others at an even greater risk. COVID-19 is spread from aerosols, tiny viral particles. We breathe in aerosols in crowded places, and we touch our face inadvertently numerous times with potentially infected hands. Masks will protect against this and is even more crucial now that Alaska's case counts are increasing, and travelers are permitted to come to Alaska from places where case counts continue to increase. There also are numerous studies that suggest if people wear a mask in public, then COVID-19 transmission could be halted. Until a vaccine or a cure for COVID-19 is discovered, face masks will be one of the most important tools we currently have to prevent the transmission of the virus to others infecting this pandemic. Given all of the laboratory and epidemiological evidence, the low cost of wearing masks, which can be made at home with no tools, and the potential to slow COVID-19 transmissions with wide-scale use, policymakers should ensure that everyone wears a mask in public. Therefore, we strongly encourage each one of you to fully support this emergency ordinance and mandate requiring universal masking in public for those two years old and above. There is sufficient, clear scientific evidence that wearing masks is one way to decrease the spread of COVID-19, and thus would reduce both the wave of severely affected patients requiring ICU and ventilator resources as well as unnecessary deaths.
And the last person signed in for the public hearing is Claire Robertson.
Hello, my name is Claire, and I am born and raised in Seward, and I actually am a life engagement assistant at the Providence-Seward Mountain Haven facility. Saying that, I do not support this mandate. I'm sure it is not an easy decision, being in your position. However, I can say, working at my job eight or 10 hours a day, most days of the week, about halfway through, I feel like I can't breathe wearing it, and I have to take it off. Of course, it's in my office because I think you should wear a mask at a healthcare facility, for sure. But regardless, you know, health is a choice. When you're sick, if you want to get better, you take the necessary steps to get better. If you don't, you don't follow them. And so I feel like if you do this, you're taking away our choice and thus taking away our health, and that's not right. And regardless of whether you pass these masks or not, COVID-19 will still eventually come to Seward. I mean, one way or another, whether it's Fourth of July or Christmas, we can't prevent it. We can take, you know, many steps to make the hit small, but it's still going to come. And so I just ask that you consider that, and I challenge you, if anything, make it a local vote. You know, I'm sure, though, you will make a wise decision hearing all these different comments. So, thank you, and, thank you.
Thank you, Claire. So there's no other folks that followed the protocol and procedures for signing up for the public hearing, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, hearing that, we'll close the public hearing. Before we start discussion, I just want to clarify that the email I think that folks are referring to was sent by a private individual, and there are, you know, I mean, private individuals within their sphere of influence are allowed to send emails, with some of the reference in the letters. You know, council and the clerk would never do anything contrary to the Open Meetings Act. Anything that comes before this body is legally noticed. The information is out there on all the ways that it's supposed to be out there. Nothing's hidden when we're deliberating at the council meeting. Is there anything else you'd like to add, Madam Claire?
No, I think what's referred to was posted on Facebook. That's where I saw it posted.
Yeah, but that was, that was a private, it wasn't sent from anyone on council. Yeah, but that was a private, it wasn't sent from anyone on council or the clerk. So, let's open it up for discussion. Is there any discussion on the ordinance? Councilmember Kreitz, you had a motion you wanted to make.
The motion was in regards to changing the wording, which I think I gave you that wording, and the motion to amend that to reflect that wording. I said, I'd like to make the motion to amend to change the emergency ordinance to reflect the wording as previously stated.
Madam Clerk, did you want to read that motion out, that language out?
I gotta say the whole thing. I'd like to make a motion to amend the wording for the Council Emergency Regulation Number Two. Except as otherwise provided in this regulation, all individuals in Seward must wear a facial covering over their nose and mouth while in buildings that are accessible to the public, for example, businesses and public buildings, comma, when they cannot maintain six feet of space between themselves and individuals outside their household. Individuals under the age of four, individuals with trouble breathing, individuals with a medical condition that prevent them from wearing a facial covering over their nose and mouth are exempt from this regulation. Facial coverings need not be worn when individuals are alone or only members of their household, individuals are eating or drinking, you can apply the stable Alaska Health Mandate, or individuals are receiving local services that cannot be adequately performed while the service provider or the recipient wears a facial covering.
So, that section, we'll read that in its entirety. Is there a second?
Second.
So, let's discuss the amendment. Are there any questions? So, I guess I have a question, then. So, it's now, instead of just everywhere, it would be limiting to buildings only.
To public buildings.
Public buildings.
You know, when this resolution was drafted, I've gotten some feedback since the package was publicly noticed, and I feel, from the feedback that I'm receiving, people want it to really be where they're seeing a lot of the tourists come to town, the Safeways, the post office, the Fish House, where you're having a lot of public access. So, I felt good in amending it to really just specify those locations.
Councilmember Buck.
The one thing that I do have an issue with is that if we are requiring something of businesses, which is a mandate, how are we providing for that? Are we going to say, if we're going to do this, we're going to help you buy the masks that you need if people want to come in your business, or do you simply say, you just can't come in here?
I know that we've had the 3,000 masks 30-day initiative, and I know we've spoken to Seward Prevention Coalition. They are on board with continuing to kind of push and help local people make masks for the public. I know at the hospital and clinic, we've had access to masks for anyone that comes in the door. It's been provided free.
Councilmember Buck, did I hear you with the question? I'm sorry.
Yes, Madam Mayor. I guess this is a question maybe for the attorney. Do we have jurisdiction over saying that you have to wear something in a federal building, in the post office?
At this stage, local facial covering laws and other social distancing rules and regulations adopted on the local level in compliance with the state statute authority that's been given to the city have been, have not been challenged by the federal government and federal buildings and in other locations. So, we do have, and, you know, it's hard to answer this question. This is a new field for all of us, but I would say, everything we have in front of us now says that the city does have that authority, so long as you execute, go through the proper process that you guys are doing. So, yes, is the short answer.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions or discussion to the amendment?
I have more questions, but not to the amendment. I just want to be clear about that.
Yeah, I have further questions, too. I guess specifically to this amendment and changing it to buildings, so if I'm in Safeway and I feel I'm able to keep my six-foot distancing, then I would not be required to wear a mask? Because like, I could be going at 10 o'clock at night and go through the self-checkered. So, like, where would that line be?
In order to have a wording space, yeah, when you cannot maintain six feet of space between yourself, or that you're not, you're with an individual outside of your household. And I think that's in.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make an amendment to the amendment.
Okay, let's hear it and see if it can be done.
My motion would be to change that required facial covering inside the city of Seward publicly-owned buildings.
Which are what?
Madam Mayor, this is Holly. Is this a good time to make a, just to comment on the amendment?
Yeah, on the amendment, sure.
So, I just want to be clear. A regulation regarding the wearing of facial masks within city buildings, you can do that through the regulation, but you don't necessarily need to, because that is under the administration's authority of the emergency operations plan.
I think you're, I think you're missing.
What happens inside those buildings. So, it's completely appropriate to do it through this method, so that you have public input, and it's, you know, it's included in your regulations, but it's not a necessary step.
I think you're missing the intent of the amendment. And so I'll wait and see if there's a second. Oh, I'll second. Okay. Councilmember Buck, did you want to explain your amendment? There's been a second. Your amendment to the amendment?
Yes. So, I wanted to make another amendment, too, to kind of go along with this, excuse me, but what I'm after is that we're the city of Seward, and what I want to, what I'm hoping with this amendment is that we're going to mandate that if you're inside of a city-owned building, it is going to be a mandate that you have facial coverings. And then I'm just going to say that hopefully another amendment that I want to make is that we're going to strongly recommend to businesses that they, that they make that mandate. But for the city of Seward, just the city of Seward, we are, we are an entity, and we're in charge of our buildings, and we're going to say that if you're inside of a city-owned building, the fire department, the library, the city hall, it is required that you are masked while you're inside of our buildings.
Can I ask the administration a question? Is that already required at this time?
So, actually, Holly could explain that, but as the Director of Emergency Operations, I have that authority for the city. It is required in the library at this time, and we do provide a mask. So, we haven't anybody challenged that yet, but it is a requirement to come in the library. You have to put a mask on. It is a requirement. Could do that in the whole city. Administration was directed by the council to do that. We could definitely implement that. I probably wouldn't do that alone, but could do so with the authority.
Councilmember Buck.
I think what the intent of Councilmember Buck is saying is that we should lead by example. If we're requiring businesses to mandate this, then we should be showing an example that we will also require our employees and our buildings to have the same mandate or the same requirements. I mean, even, and even if, you know, the employees of Safeway are required to wear masks, so that has no, you know, no difference on whether they can social distance or not. They have to wear masks.
Yeah, and Councilmember Kreitz?
I think each business can be more strict, like you're saying, Safeway is requiring, regardless of social distancing, and they have the sneeze guard, so they are being more strict in what they're requiring of their employees, which is great. Really, the intent of this is to catch the people that are walking around Safeway without their mask and not social distancing. But I think with the way that I amended it initially, it does include public buildings, which would be city-owned buildings, but it also includes privately-owned businesses as well.
Is there any further discussion on the amendment to the amendment?
Yeah, so what I'm after with this one is that, of course, with our agenda statement, it still says that the CDC repeatedly recommends masks. And so what I'm hoping for, like, another amendment, let's say, is that we're going to strongly recommend that any city business, the city business themselves are the ones that's going to make that decision. So, looking at the city of Seward, like, as a business, we're going to mandate masks, and we're going to then highly recommend that every business themselves would then recommend masks. We're not going to tell businesses, you have to. That's what I'm after.
Okay, so let's speak to the amendment that's on the floor. Would you repeat your amendment, and then we'll call for a vote? They're both on the floor. I know, but the first one we're taking up.
Instead of any public building, it was inside the city of Seward-owned public buildings.
Okay, so we're voting on that addition to the amendment.
Madam Mayor, if I may, I would just like to say that I think we're starting to divvy this thing up and make it a lot more complicated than it needed to be. It was very simple. It was very easy. It was a lot simpler before we started doing all this. I'm going to vote no on this amendment, to the amendment.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? Call for a vote? Voting on the secondary amendment to strike businesses and just change it to city of Seward publicly-owned buildings? No, that's not correct. Can you repeat your motion again, Councilmember Buck?
So, instead of, instead of public buildings, it was going to be inside city of Seward-owned public buildings.
Businesses and city of Seward?
No.
No, not businesses, not businesses, just inside city of Seward-owned public buildings.
That's what I stated. I believe that's what I stated. Striking businesses and requiring it inside.
Madam Mayor, this is Holly, once again. I just want to make a recommendation on the amendment, on the language. And the regular line is, the reference to public buildings often gets us, leads to confusion, because I think what you're trying to say is city-owned buildings open to the public. Or, because public buildings really is usually defined as a building owned by, owned publicly, but you're really looking at those buildings that are serving members of the public, so they have traffic, so they would need, right, correct or not? But I, but I think, because if it's a city-owned building, it is quote-unquote a public building, right? So, you can say all city-owned buildings. If you just are talking, you just want to blanket all buildings owned by the city, or you can say city-owned buildings open to the public, if you want to blanket city-owned buildings that have people coming in and out who are members of the public.
I would accept that friendly amendment to inside city of Seward-owned public buildings accessible to the public.
I think that's different than what the attorney said.
It is very different. I think the only difference is just take out the word "public," in front of buildings, so city-owned buildings open to the public.
Councilmember Buck.
So, voting on the secondary amendment to change, to strike businesses and change it to city-owned buildings open to the public. Kreitz?
No.
Buckland?
Yes.
McClure?
Yes.
Buck?
Yes.
Sees? Osanga?
No.
Merriteri?
Yes.
Okay, this amendment has been approved. So, now, let's read the motion that's on, the motion that's on the floor, again, to change the ordinance. So, the language that's affected is "while in buildings that are accessible to the public." For example, city-owned buildings open to the public. With the rest of the language, though. With the change also to change cloth to facial. Councilmember Osanga?
So, I might understand now that we took a citywide mandate, basically, and made it to just the city of Seward-owned buildings accessible by the public? That's what we did. So, we're mandating, we're going to mandate something that we have the authority to do anyways?
It depends if this ordinance passes or not.
Right, but we have the ability to make masks mandatory in public access city-owned buildings now, so we've just basically gutted the whole, this whole thing's just got totally gutted.
Well, right now, the, what's on the floor is that amendment changing the language to the ordinance.
I understand that, but it's not.
So, if that language doesn't pass, then we go back to the original language in the ordinance.
Well, I just want to make a point, then, that it's, it's been gutted. If this passes, this amendment passes, that is.
So, right now, the amendment on the floor is just pertaining to city buildings, so...
Madam Mayor, would that include things like the Sea Life Center of Providence and the clinic? Because the city technically owns those properties? And I, I mean, I, it would be good to know if that's the intent.
I mean, aren't they already required, the Sea Life Center requires you to wear a mask inside, as well as the?
But it would be under our regulations, so we could implement that in those properties. Just want to throw that out there, because those are city-owned properties with public.
Yes, Madam Mayor, that would include the Providence and the Sea Life Center.
And the CHC?
We don't, we don't know.
So, is there any further discussion? Let's vote on the amendment.
Amend the word, sorry. Amend the wording for the Council Emergency Regulation Number Two to read, "Individuals with a medical condition that prevents them from wearing a facial covering over their nose and mouth while in buildings that are accessible to the public." For example, city-owned buildings open to the public? Doesn't sound right.
No, I think we were technically the...
I'll read it.
The ones that said that they were, that, uh, public buildings.
Picking up on Regulation Number Two, the first sentence, "All individuals in Seward must wear a facial covering over their nose and mouth while in buildings that are accessible to the public." For example, city-owned buildings open to the public. And then it continues, and then later changed cloth face covering to facial, cloth covering to facial covering. That is the amendment that's on the floor. So, in my mind, that still includes businesses, because it says public buildings, correct? No, it says city-owned buildings. No, the first part.
That's an example. Sorry.
Yeah. That's, that's my point earlier, because, so when you read that again, the "for example" is the city buildings. Well, in buildings that are accessible to the public. Yeah, so that would be all buildings. Should be interpreted. Well, I mean, read it, read it through. And I think Councilmember Buck was saying he was going to have a further amendment to strike that. So, when you read that through, the "for example" is the city buildings. All individuals in Seward must wear a facial covering over their nose and mouth while in buildings that are accessible to the public. For example, city-owned buildings open to the public. Councilmember Buckland?
The last motion was to strike business. It struck business.
Under the example, it did strike it, under the example, but you're right, it says "while in buildings that are accessible to the public." Which could be private, private or public. Councilmember Osanga? Councilmember Sees?
I think it sounds like, or any building, to me, that you go in that's open to the public, not just the city-owned buildings. When it said, I think it says business.
Councilmember Kreitz?
So, my question is, is it Councilmember Buck's intent to just add the wording that city-owned buildings be in the amendment, or is he actually trying to strike businesses, private businesses from the amendment? Because if his intent is just to add city-owned buildings, that's a very easy add to put that wording in.
Councilmember Buck?
So what I was after was the, the Council Emergency Regulation Number Two was to be just for city-owned buildings accessible to the public.
I don't think that that's been accomplished.
It was, business was struck.
Read the, read the motion again.
If you.
Councilmember Buckland?
If you go back and listen, she said, and that was where, there was the clarification, the motion, the amended language was to strike business and add city-owned buildings.
But what I'm saying is, based on the attorney's interpretation of what public access is that she talked about on the phone, I don't think that that's been accomplished with that motion.
I would disagree, but I would say that you would have to make another motion to add that back in. Because that's what the, what we struck from the last one.
My intention is not to add it back in. My intention is to clarify the motion to make sure we know what we're doing. So.
If you read the sentence by removing the example, can I do that for illustration? Because when you add, it's just, "All individuals in Seward must wear a facial covering over their nose and mouth while in buildings that are accessible to the public." That would end the sentence if we didn't have the "for example" on it.
So to me, my interpretation of that is, I can walk into, I hate to even name a business, but I can walk into, oh, we've already talked about Safeway. I can walk into Safeway because it's a public building. You know, like, they can't restrict the public walking in there, and then this would be applicable.
Mayor?
Yes.
And this is Holly, I'm on the phone, so I may be missing something. But I believe Councilmember Butts wanted to, his amendment was intended to strike everything after the word "in," so it's "while in." And then you strike the buildings, uh, accessible to the public, comma, for example. And you add, "And city-owned buildings open to the public." So it is no longer, so he has narrowed the regulation to only city-owned buildings. And then was going to do an additional amendment to add the strongly encouraged requirements for all other ordinance presumably, like those buildings on the example. So maybe we need to, regardless of where we ended up, I think it might be worthwhile to determine what council's intention was on the amendment they voted on. And then, and then get that amendment clearly stated and make sure we have a start and, and start and stop of where that amendment is. What words we're taking out exactly, and what words we're adding. And I know it's messy, but that backs it up and it makes it clear and it makes sure Councilmember Butts' intention was what the vote for carry on.
So if we can go back to, can the clerk state where we're at? Let's clarify the motion so that we know what we're doing at this point.
So the motion right now is for Emergency Regulation Number Two to read, "All individuals in Seward must wear a facial covering over their nose and mouth while in buildings that are accessible to the public." For example, "City-owned buildings open to the public."
So Councilmember Butts, what was your motion?
So my motion was to take out "while" access to buildings open to the public and take that and make it just to buildings that were, that were owned by the city with public access. So I think doing, can I just make another motion to strike then, public buildings such as?
No, it was "for example."
Or "for example."
So let's let the clerk read the motion.
I thought it was a moving it out of my truck, I'm, I'm on my way.
So let's let the clerk read the motion.
So amend the wording for the Council Emergency Regulation Number Two to read, "All individuals in Seward must wear a facial covering over their nose and mouth while in buildings that are accessible to the public." For example, "City-owned buildings open to the public."
Hold on, because Councilmember Butts needs to make the motion. So can you say your motion again?
My motion is that we strike back the words of, and recall from there too, I'm sorry, I don't have a pen and paper with me right now, is that, if buildings open to the public such as, we're going to strike those words, that it's only going to read, the, the, I'm trying to figure out where it, but that, it's only going to read to buildings that are owned by the city, open to the public.
While in buildings that are owned by the city and open to the public, period.
Yes.
Or, well, not period, but it continues, but that would be it.
So before we have discussion, we need a second on the motion.
A second.
Councilmember Sees?
I'm very confused, because if we're trying to do this in all businesses, that tells us we don't. It's only the city-owned.
Right, that's correct.
So why are we even doing that whole thing?
That's under discussion. Councilmember Buckland?
I would say the reason why my Councilmember Butts is trying to do this is because he's trying to make another motion after this to, to say that they would strongly recommend businesses to follow in suit of what the city is doing. So I think that's his goal. And I don't, I hate to speak for you, Councilmember Butts, but I don't know if that's what you meant.
No, that's, that's exactly what I meant, is that we're setting the example, we're making the mandate for the, for the city. It's buildings that are accessible to the public for the city. And we want every business out there to follow our example. But we're not going to tell them that they have to.
So Councilmember Ossenga?
Again, I would just like to point out that we have control of our own city-owned buildings. We can mandate anytime we want. That's the power we have. We don't need to do that in this situation. And we're basically taking this and gutting it. And it's no longer what its intent was. It's no, it doesn't even resemble that if we continue down this road.
Councilmember Kreitz?
And I, I did want to say, I don't agree with the amended version, I will be voting no on that. But I want everyone to realize, this is an emergency ordinance, it's only in effect for 60 days. The intent is to get us through this busy season, this summer, with lots of people. You need to realize that the, you know, the outbreak that they're having in Ketchikan was in a public gathering. The outbreak in group would, public gathering. This wasn't in city-owned buildings where these were occurring. That's not the intent.
So I might say, though, that public gatherings actually aren't covered under the original language either, because those would be outside and could social distance, so you wouldn't necessarily have to wear a mask. Councilmember Ossenga?
I would, in the original wording of this ordinance, that was covered simply by saying, if you're outside of your home and you can't social distance or keep social distance with someone from outside of your household. That encompassed everything. That was outside, that was in the yard, that was down on the beach, that was everything.
Yeah, but Councilmember Kreitz, Councilman, or Councilmember Ossenga, Councilmember Kreitz changed it to be inside city, but inside buildings with her amendment.
Right, right.
So I mean, then it's not covered.
Well, I will say that when that amendment was made, I thought that that was just going to be a tightening of it to include the buildings, and I actually was.
Yeah, and because it says when they can't main, um, six feet of space between them, between individuals.
But it did say "while in" buildings with access to the public. So it would just, it would not include any outside activities, period, with that amendment. So right now, we're talking about changing the language per Councilmember Butts to city-owned buildings only. And I think the language reads "per your intent." Is there any further discussion? Okay, can we call for a vote, please?
Can I read it one more time?
Yes, please.
"All individuals in Seward must wear a facial covering over their nose and mouth while in buildings that are owned by the city and open to the public." And then it continues, and then it cannot leave six feet of space.
Call for a vote, please.
Mayor, this is Holly. I just, one comment. So when that is it, that should be it. I think the rest of the motion should be in deleting the remainder of the regulation. Because that regulation is limiting it to only city-owned buildings. And so the exemptions that are provided for eating and drinking and being in, um, being in other areas or outside of, you know, all of those things become confusing if we're just talking about within city-owned, uh, buildings owned by the city. Then the strongly encouragement language that's added can incorporate an exemption. But you may want to, so you can pull them back as they apply to the next amendment. But currently, you're just, um, some of those won't, it won't make sense. Does that make sense?
We're currently under a secondary motion right now, Holly, so that will have to be a separate motion.
Okay, that works too.
Are there any further comments? Call for the question, please. Kreitz?
No.
McClure?
Yes.
Butts?
Yes.
Buckland?
Yes.
Ossenga?
No.
Sees?
Yes.
Merriteri?
Yes.
This amendment has been approved. Councilmember Butts, did you have a secondary, did you have another motion? Oh, no, actually, our first motion's on the floor.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
Um, so under Council Risk Regulation Number Two, um, individuals under the age of four, individuals without breathing, individuals with medical condition that prevent them from wearing cloth are exempt from this, and not be, not be worn, period. Then, after worn, period, then it would include the city, city recommends any business to mandate facial coverings.
Question?
Could you ask him to repeat that, please? Yeah, I'm trying to write down where it is. The city recommends, what was the rest of that?
The city highly recommends any business to mandate facial coverings.
We need a second before we start.
I'll second that.
Okay. Okay, Councilmember Butts, did you want to explain or speak to your motion?
So from there, if we take this one here too, so that allows some of that other language to be in there. But now the City of Seward is saying, we want every business in town, we're going to highly recommend that you as a business, that you mandate facial coverings. It's your responsibility, it's your decision to mandate facial coverings for business. It's the same as walking in no shoe, no shirt, no service. But now we want you to wear a mask in our business too.
So, Councilmember Butts, this is Holly Wells again. I, I would recommend the way that you do that in order to get to your intent is after the end of the first sentence, as currently amended, you add the, you know, the strongly recommend language. So that we strongly recommend, uh, all, I think your language was, we strongly recommend all individuals in Seward where facial coverings and all, yeah, businesses open to the public in Seward, is that correct?
The city highly recommends all, all businesses.
And then, and then keep the language. I would put that one next, and then I keep the language, individuals under age of four, individuals with trouble breathing, that sentence, I keep that. And I delete facial coverings need not be worn when? Because now you have a much more limited scope of this rule. And so they need not, technically, it's a, it's an encouragement, not a requirement. So they technically need not be worn anywhere except for within city buildings, right? So I think you can just remove the facial coverings need not be worn when, one, two, and three. And that can be done as one amendment.
Discussion, Councilmembers?
So just a quick question, in Holly's version, is she saying that the city is asking? Or is she saying businesses? Because Dale, or Councilmember Butts was saying that he wanted the businesses to mandate this. We strongly recommend that the businesses not.
Oh, I see, okay, yes, I see. That was, that was my mistake. So then it would be.
Good question.
The City of Seward, uh, the Seward City Council highly recommends, or strongly encourages, which, which word to use, Councilmember Butts?
Highly recommends.
Okay, highly recommends all, uh, businesses within the city require individuals to wear cloth coverings, facial coverings. Uh, facial coverings. When they cannot maintain six feet of space, do you want to keep that limitation on their, on their request to them?
I just think that's a really good recommendation, that if somebody can't maintain that within, within a business, that they should be wearing face masks. And that, that the company themselves can mandate that.
Council, Vice Mayor McClure?
So then, if that were the case, then that would negate Section Four, the penalties and enforcement, right? Because we would not be monitoring the individual businesses, it would be up to them. That's, is that what I'm understanding? I'm not sure who I'm asking.
Is that your intent? And Councilmember Butts, and the Attorney Wells?
Yeah.
We would, we would not be having the police officers write tickets within businesses, is that correct? So that Section Four is not applicable?
Yes, you would want to delete that Section Four. Because a strong encouragement cannot be enforced with fines, so absolutely, that's correct.
Well, speaking to that amendment, um, that would make this work for me.
And it wasn't going to work for me with the mandate, with Section Four. So we're getting closer to what I would accept, just, that's all.
The one decision council will need to make if you do go this direction is you could, you could maintain the fine requirement just for the first mandated piece, or fine, for individuals who are in city-owned buildings not wearing a facial covering in compliance with the rule. But that would be, because it's such a limited scope, I would not recommend.
We'll have to, we'll have to take up, we'll have to take up, um, we'll have to take up that discussion that's not dealing with the motion that we have on the floor.
I just wanted clarification, that's all.
Further comments? Let's take a vote on that.
So amending Ordinance 2020-007 by adding, "The city highly recommends all businesses within the City of Seward where facial coverings, when they cannot maintain six feet of distance" to the end of Council Emergency Regulation Number Two, and removing facial coverings need not be worn when, and the three sections below that, and then removing Section Four.
No.
No, that's a different.
So let's, um.
I had it as, "The city highly recommends all businesses, um, within the city to mandate facial coverings." Can I have clarification?
Yeah.
Are you saying yes, Councilmember Butts?
Um, I, yes, but I also think, um, keeping the Section Four in for right now, because Section Four, um, the violation, that's a violation because the only thing that we have mandated is within the city, uh, city-owned buildings accessible to the public. The rest of it is a recommendation.
So let's get this straightened out first. So, um, piecing together between what you said and what the Attorney Wells said is that your amendment starts outside their household and reads, is that correct?
No, they took that back. It's, now becomes the last sentence in that paragraph. So removing facial coverings need not be worn when? Strike that and add a sentence, "The city highly recommends all."
not be worn when, strike that and add a sentence, the city highly recommends all businesses within the city mandate facial coverings. That's what I got.
Highly recommends.
Highly recommends.
The city highly recommends all businesses within the city mandate facial coverings.
Is that correct, councilmember Butts? And then it takes out the one, two, and three?
I think the city, the, the city attorney said it better, or we moved it up into, uh, I think, likely back to the first sentence.
Mm-hmm.
I'm sorry. She put it in outside their household, following outside their household is the language, and then it keeps in the individuals under four, individuals with trouble breathing, and the rest of that, um, section. Is that correct?
If we shoot up there to get one more reading.
The city highly recommends all businesses within the city of Seward where facial coverings, when they cannot maintain six feet of distance, to the end of council emergency regulation number two, and then remove facial coverings need not be worn when, and the sections under that.
I don't think that's right.
I think we all have different versions of it.
Mm-hmm. So here's my understanding, would you read that first part of that language?
I think we should read this, the part at the beginning to the end.
So here's what I think it says, um, I think after, uh, they cannot maintain six feet of space between themselves and individuals outside their household, now this language begins. You don't think so?
No, because she had said it should be in the first sentence.
Mayor, I think I may have, don't hold me to this, but I think I captured it, um, while listening to, to, can I read you what I think the first, what it, what it's supposed to say in its entirety?
Sure.
Or try?
Yeah.
Would this be appropriate time?
Now, now would be great.
Yes, okay. Okay, so what I have is, except as otherwise provided in this regulation, all individuals in Seward must wear a facial covering over their nose and mouth when inside city-owned buildings open to the public. City council strongly recommends businesses operating in the city require individuals to wear facial coverings when they cannot maintain six feet of space between themselves and individuals outside their household. Individuals under the age of four, individuals with trouble breathing, and individuals with a medical condition that prevents them from wearing a cloth covering over their nose and mouth are exempt from this regulation, and the rest is deleted.
One, two, and three.
That's what I thought it was.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Except it says, yeah. And it should say facial. Facial.
Can you read the Seward City Council sentence again, just that one, Holly?
Yes, uh, city council strongly recommends businesses operating in the city require individuals to wear facial coverings when they cannot maintain six feet of space between themselves and individuals outside their household.
And strike all the rest.
Strike all the rest, but I have a question, why would you strike all the rest? Because then we're encouraging them to make individuals alone with members of their household wear a mask, encouraging them to make individuals that are eating and drinking in compliance with the state of Alaska wear their mask, and make, and strongly encourage individuals, those businesses, to mandate individuals when receiving lawful services that cannot adequately perform. I have no idea why those would be stricken.
Because we're narrowing the scope of only to city, to city buildings, so that no longer applies, because the businesses and all of that has been removed, so all of the other things were now, you're not doing those things in city bus, in city buildings, the public is not.
My point is, now we're adding back strongly encouraging all businesses to require masks, but require masks even without these other things not in there, so we would blanketly be encouraging all businesses to require masks, whether that's in a bar for eating or drinking or restaurants, whether that's if someone's alone or with members of their household, so we would be making those businesses now require something that's not necessary because of, um, health recommendations.
But we're not making businesses do anything.
Well, sorry, sorry, strongly.
Exactly, and I would recommend we keep, we end it at this regulation, so you keep those exemptions regarding medical conditions and age, um, because of the mandated part for city-owned buildings, but councilmember Buckland is exactly right by taking out, because we're saying we need not be worn by these other individuals while they're eating and drinking, well, because it's just a recommendation, they may not be worn, so businesses can, and what I, what we can do is, we can incorporate that in the commentary to your regulation and just reiterate that if you're making a strong recommendation, you know, we don't anticipate or we don't expect businesses to, um, to require facial coverings in situations such as, but because it's just rhetoric at that point, it's not, you know, we're just giving them additional guidance, we're not giving them a requirement, I think lifting it from the regulation itself will keep it cleaner and avoid confusion as to whether or not they're being required to do something, because if they see that it says we need not do this, then there might be some confusion as to whether or not the first part of the regulation is indeed a requirement as opposed to a encouragement.
Then why include the six foot distance?
Yeah, that's the part I don't understand.
Because it says, when they cannot maintain a six foot space between themselves and individuals outside their household, so that would be six foot space inside the building.
Inside city.
Yes.
But not applicable to other businesses.
That got added into the highly recommended sentence too.
Okay, well, I guess we're, we're where we're at, and we can agree or disagree, but I think there's a motion on the floor. Is there any other comments? Are we ready to call for the vote?
Do you want me to read this back again first?
Yes.
Yes. So amend ordinance 2020-007 by adding the city council strongly recommends all businesses operating within the city of Seward require wearing facial coverings when they cannot maintain six feet of distance between themselves and individuals outside of their household, and that goes after individuals outside of their household, the first sentence, and then remove facial coverings need not be worn, and the three sections under it.
So do we still have the language in there that says individuals under the age of four, individuals with trouble breathing, and individuals with a medical condition?
Yeah, I think if we just read the whole thing from the beginning.
Yes. Except as otherwise provided in this regulation, all individuals in Seward must wear a cloth covering over their nose, a facial covering over their nose and mouth when they cannot maintain six feet of space between themselves and individuals outside their household. The city council strongly recommends all businesses.
You missed the whole first part.
We already amended it.
So except as otherwise provided in this regulation, all individuals in Seward must wear a facial covering over their nose and mouth while in buildings that are accessible to the public.
That own, by the city and open to the public.
That are owned by the city and open to the public, and then after that is where we add in, the city council strongly recommends all businesses operating within the city of Seward require wearing facial coverings when they cannot maintain six feet of distance between themselves and individuals outside of their house, their household. Individuals under the age of four, individuals with trouble breathing, and individuals with a medical condition that prevents them from wearing a facial covering over their nose and mouth are exempt from this regulation.
And.
And removing facial coverings, and two, three.
That's just the end.
Any further discussion? Okay, let's call for a vote.
McClure?
Yes.
Butts?
Butts, are you still there?
Yes.
Kreitz?
No.
Sees?
No.
Ossinga?
No.
Buckland?
Yes.
Mayor Terry?
Yes.
This amendment has been approved.
Okay. Next, we need to strike section four.
I would.
Oh, councilmember, or vice mayor?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to delete section four.
A second.
And for people listening, should we read that?
So section four was the penalties and enforcement, a violation of this emergency ordinance shall constitute a violation of an emergency mandate and shall be punishable by a fine of no more than $25. Is there any discussion? I might say this was the reason I was actually going to vote down this amendment, because I wasn't going to have our police force writing tickets.
I think that it would have been unmanageable, um, I think that people would have stepped back and said, I'm six feet, no, I'm not, and I think there would have been a lot of, I think it would have been a burden on our police department that could have caused a lot of issues. Councilmember Kreitz?
So, my understanding with the advisement of attorney Wells was that a mandate has to be enforceable by a penalty, so if you mandated this, the way that you redone this, that they have to wear these masks inside a city-owned building, there's not going to be a punishable enforcement to it?
Okay, councilmember Wells, I'm, I'm sorry, attorney Wells?
Yes, that's correct, when we have, so what we're learning now is the mandates across the country are getting some judicial attention, is that when we have a mandate like this, you do want to, if you want to enforce it, you want to do that through the process of the adoption, so having a $25 or some fine, uh, and you want to monetize it in the ordinance as well, it is the appropriate way to go if you want to have that enforcement piece. If your goal is to encourage, um, much like the state, in a lot of their advisements, they encourage education over penalty or fines, and that's, that's the route, that's the way you can go, but we really don't have a requirement that has an enforcement component at that point.
Councilmember Sees?
So in other words, we're saying, because the city is, we're mandating that the city-owned buildings, they're the ones that can get, they'll be the only ones getting the fine, not in a public, not in a restaurant, not in a gift store, they won't get the fine. You want us to highly recommend that they wear masks from each one of these other businesses, but we're not mandating that, so the only place that somebody is going to get a ticket is with, in the city buildings, correct? Am I correct?
If this isn't, if, if, if this isn't stricken.
Yeah, okay, so, I think that our police department, if I come into a building and I, they didn't know me, of course, nobody does, and I didn't have a mask on, and it says on there, it's mandated that you wear a mask in this building, any, any building that the city owns, and I turn around and I give them my payment or whatever, and walk out, by the time you call the police department, that person's going to be gone, so unless the person that's waiting on them can give them a ticket or something, the police department is going to be gone. I mean, they're out on something else, they're not going to be able to get there and give that person a ticket.
I agree.
And listen, I have one thing to add to that, that's one council considering, you know, when we were talking about what needed to happen in order to enforce this mandate, we were looking at the enforcement of a mandate on property that was outside city-owned, uh, property, right? So now we're looking at what's going on inside a city-owned building, and there are other mechanisms, both for the city, that if a private business decides to adopt their own rules, there's other mechanisms for enforcement outside a fine, now at that point, we're sort of acting more as a property owner, so there's trespass, or there's, uh, there's violations of our rules for accessing those buildings, and we can tap into that in order to remove somebody or to, um, for lack of a better word, demand that they put on a facial covering on or demonstrate that they're exempt on that property, so as far as do you have to have the fine in order to enforce the mandate, I think you could enforce the mandate using other laws now, because it's our property, it's the city's property. Does that make sense?
I, I for one am not willing to write people a ticket that are trying to access city services.
Thank you.
Or ask our police department to do that.
Okay.
So, any further discussion? Madam Clerk?
Striking section four, penalties and enforcement of emergency ordinance 2020-007. McClure?
Yes.
Ossinga?
No.
Sees?
No, if I say yes, that means it's out of there, correct?
Yes.
I, yes.
Buckland?
Yes.
Butts?
Yes.
Kreitz?
No.
Mayor Terry?
Yes.
This amendment has been approved.
So now the ordinance is back on the table. I for one would like to see outside of this ordinance, is the medical community do more, um, public relations and get it in the newspaper more often, I know that there's COVID money available, I would like to see a big push to get, um, uh, education out there instead of having the city try to mandate something, so I'm going to vote against this ordinance. Again, my big piece was trying to get the police department to write people tickets and all the shenanigans that would come with that, um, so that's where I stand. Councilmember Buckland?
This is not an easy decision, um, I've heard from many people on both sides of this issue, um, in my capacity where I work, um, it is very hard to, um, to enforce the mandates that are put on by the state, so when we opened up at 25%, it was not easy at 19 people in a bar, um, after they have a few drinks to keep them apart. I, in that being said, it puts me in a weird position, because I then have to enforce something that I, it's impossible to do now, these days, now that we're open at 100%. Um, so even though they say, well, you can go out to a bar, but show some distance, and, um, you know, as all the mitigation process that we have, cleaning everything, um, plastic and all this stuff that we're using, it's, it's hard, and I don't want to put anybody in a position where they have to say, a business in a dis, in a place where they have to say, you can't come in here because you don't have this, and what, what position do we put businesses in that? Um, and then I do feel that, I, I wear a mask every time I go to the store, but I do feel that that's, you know, it's a, it's a, it's a really, it's a thing that we do to, because we care about other people, and I hope that that still stays, and that's the, the, um, that's the root of the matter, that, you know, I do agree with sometimes when people say, oh, I don't want to wear a mask because I don't want to wear a mask, I don't think that's a nice attitude to have, but it's to protect other people, um, I just think that there's too many, uh, too many ways around this, um, and it's not an easy thing to do, so I just want to say that, um, this is not an easy decision, um, and thank you for everybody who's provided comment about it, um, it's, when you're passionate about something, it's hard when you don't get your way.
Any further comments? Councilmember Sees?
Well, when it says that you do not have to wear one if you are physically not able to wear a mask, so I go into a store and I don't have a mask on, and they say, you have to wear a mask, oh, I don't have to because I got something wrong with me, how are you going to prove that? I mean, how are we going to talk about that? There's a lot of people that say, I can't wear one because I can't breathe, I pass out, I, you know, so how do you, if you want to go in there and you don't have a mask, just say I can't? I mean, I don't know.
So when city, so how would the city enforce that?
Well, I don't, that's it.
Well, the library's doing that, so, so most of.
What do they do if someone says, I'm a domestic violence survivor, I was choked by my spouse, I can't wear anything on my face, like, what do they do at that point?
Well, so if this passes, I can have the police say, you're removed from the library and the property is sold.
Because we police.
But right now, if that's not enacted.
Mayor?
Yeah.
I would also suggest that that person in that situation would be, they're, I have a mental health condition regarding PTSD and other, you know, that makes with the wearing of a facial covering, um, it, it, that's an exemption, an exemption under your regulation, but also I would. but also I, I would say under the city's policy, they wouldn't enforce.
So, that's.
If you're covering laws, it would cause mental distress.
So, that's, that's Councilmember Cease's question. So, they would have to disclose that private information to, so that they wouldn't be trespassed from a city building? Is that correct? One of the things.
But you can say that.
But currently, the way the regulation is written, it doesn't, it's not designed to require a, that. So, there is very much a component of personal accountability and representation. It's sort of like, you know, we file our taxes and we are, you know, we self-report and it's a similar type of rule. There is a requirement, but if there is an exemption for a mental health condition, um, that, that makes the facial covering untenable for that person, and the city would not be asking for, like, for example, let some of the courts require a doctor's note before, so they require facial covering while in the courthouse, uh, for the federal court, district court, and they required a, uh, a doctor's note for those types of exemptions. We did not include that. Anyway.
Councilmember Ossenga, then?
I'm just going to say, I'm going to vote no for this, not for, uh, for the reasons simply that this is not even anywhere near what we started out with. This thing has so, been changed so much that it's just not even close to what was started. So, I'll be voting no on that.
Councilmember Baklan? Vice Mayor?
And I, I wanted to say the same thing. Um, I am going to vote no as well, just because it is, um, not the intent of what, um, you know, we originally had on this. And I just wanted everyone to know, I, I've heard the concerns on both sides and I understand everyone's concerns, but this is a matter of public health. And when I came here to introduce this, I'm advocating for the healthcare, dear local healthcare providers that are very adamant that this is what we need to help protect the vulnerable people in our community. And that is what I was trying to do, and I'm very disappointed that we got away from that intent.
Any further comments? I have a few more other comments. I, we are a masked family. I wear a mask all day at work. I wear a mask everywhere we go. My children do. My husband's business requires a mask. Our neighbor gave me this mask. So, I am 100% on the science. I, from the beginning, did not want our vulnerable population to have to deal with our police force and to have our police force have to deal with enforcing this on the Fourth of July. And again, when we changed it from outside to buildings only, it still has all our visitors coming and being in the RV parks and being in the streets. So, that changed the ordinance for that for me also. So, I am going to vote no because, again, um, all those reasons, and we've made so many changes on the fly that I don't think that any, anything we voted tonight would be adequately publicly noticed. So, is there any other comments?
Madam Clerk?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Butts?
Um, so originally for me, originally, I, I was going to vote this emergency ordinance down. Uh, this was, the amendments that I made was the only way that I could see, um, to make some type of compromise. So, at least have something out there that says that we are going to strongly recommend for business, businesses to do this, but not to have a mandate, not to be enforcement and have to just, you know, keep, uh, keep sending people out there and having people, reporting people and, and, and just, it was too much there. So, I felt like with this, what we have is a compromise, and I'm still going to, I'm still going to hold yes for it because I still would like to see the city saying that we do highly recommend that every business mandate it themselves, police themselves, and not have the city tell them what to do.
Any other comments? Madam Clerk, can we call for a vote, please?
So, enacting ordinance.
Madam Mayor, I, I apologize. I, I do need to just, there's one other thing that I should take care of housekeeping-wise. In Section 3, you went out commentary that the patch doesn't exhibit. That commentary is not going to be fully, it's not going to make complete sense with the changes. So, you may want to just, uh, either just delete it and then we can bring commentary back to council for it to adopt because it really is just commentary, right? So, it just provides that, so either make a, someone, a motion to amend it to delete that, or we can make a motion to change the wording. But I recommend deleting it and then we can work on the commentary separately.
So, I'll move to delete Section 3 in its entirety.
I'll second that.
I think that's a better course.
And subsequently renumber the sections.
Can we have a vote, please?
Deleting Section 3 in its entirety. Ossenga?
No.
McClure?
Yes.
Butts?
Yes.
Kreitz? Cease?
Yes.
Baklan?
Yes.
Mayor Terry?
Yes.
This amendment has been approved.
Now, the main, um, ordinance is back on the table.
So, Ordinance 2020-007 is amended. Butts?
Yes.
Baklan?
No.
McClure?
No.
Ossenga?
No.
Cease?
No.
Kreitz?
No.
Mayor Terry?
No.
The emergency ordinance is amended, has failed.
Okay, next on the agenda is Resolution 2020-051. Madam Clerk, would you read the title in a minute?
Resolution 2020-051, accepting $5,324,326 from the State of Alaska under the Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Security CARES Act that will be used to create a small business economic relief grant established by a city council in order to provide economic relief to the community from the coronavirus pandemic and appropriating funds. And then Mayor, if I can, it's after 10:30, so can we get a vote to extend the meeting?
We'll, we'll wait till it, we'll wait till it's over. City Manager, did you want to present this resolution?
I'm sure. It's just, um, so real quickly, there's, um, on page 42, that whole first page is fine. The title could be stricken so that everything after CARES Act is taken out because this is not approving any of the program. This is just accepting the funds. And I did get a, an update from the attorney this afternoon explaining that if, on page 43, we could literally take that whole page out and then just add, um, a short whereas accepting the funds and the amount of, you know, specified in that middle whereas of the amount, because then we wouldn't be obligated into any kind of changes. So, if we do just the acceptance, uh, resolution without all the ties to it, if, as the, as the act changes and the rules modify, we aren't tied to anything, but we would encumber the funds. And then we'll deal with the second portion afterwards. So, I would ask that you just strike all the whereas's except for the funding amount in the middle. And then the, the last, um, she actually sent an update, which I could read if you prefer that. I did forward it to the clerks. I don't know if you guys received that.
I have it.
Earlier this evening.
It's on email.
On email, yeah. So, so basically, it's, um, now therefore be a resolved that the city council, the city of Seward, Alaska agrees to accept the coronavirus relief funds from the department and, sorry, just trying to read it, and the coronavirus relief funds from the department and to comply with those conditions in the grant agreement between the city of Seward and the department. That way, it's just very vague, doesn't get into all the details of anything, it just gets us in the process of getting the money, which we still need to address the whole thing we talked about at the last meeting with the committee, has to get together, the budget committee, and we need direction on some of those programs we talked about.
Wow. So.
Since I moved it from the consent.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, I'm, one, not in favor of removing all of those unless you bring it back for us to see, um, because I don't want the language for the, um, the small business loans to go away. Two, I remove this from the consent agenda because of Section 2, where it says the CARES Act Fund account number there to another account number that has XXX. I wasn't clear on why there was, uh, fu, funding is hereby appropriated from COVID-19 CARES Act Fund, that. So, do we have funds?
No, we have not. This is a request asking for funds, so.
So, why do we have funds going from one count, account to another account?
Accounts are not created yet. That's why they have X's on them.
Okay, so it says funding is hereby appropriated from this, from this account.
Right.
To this account.
Is that a transfer account that it goes into and then it gets transferred to?
Correct. It has to be encumbered and received, and then it would go into like a holding account or some type of a, a reserve.
Councilmember Cease?
I, I can see that because we did, you want to make sure that you don't overspend that. So, if it's in another account and when you have to draw out of that, you do it that way. So, you're keeping track of how much money, because if it just goes into the general fund.
And just so you know, there's, there's no timeline on this. We could do this anytime until December.
Well, I'd like to say, there's a timeline to, there's a timeline to expend the funds.
Yeah, December 31st.
Right, so we have to, I mean, so the time, time becomes an issue to get this out and get the money on the street and to get it spent.
That's very true.
Yeah.
Like I said earlier, um, the whole Kenai Peninsula, including the borough, everybody but Kenai is taking the slow down approach because they're looking at like businesses are busy, people are here, they're making money. The intent is to get monies in the businesses. A lot of them are going to need the money in October, November, when the summer flow stops. So, so it's really a, there, there's different places doing different things, but we do not have to take any action. If you don't want to encumber this tonight and, and kind of simplify it, we can bring it back, uh, when we have everything ready and do it all at once.
Let's make sure. Vice Mayor? Well, at this point, I would rather get something that works because if we're going to remove all the whereas's and change everything else, that, that's, that's not at all what I'm seeing here. So, I wouldn't mind waiting until, postponing this till the next meeting and get something that's correct. Councilmember Cease?
I'm not sure how they can take it all out, except for the fact that we should ask for it now, so we'll have it. It's not where it's going afterwards. It's just telling us here that it's going to go into this account and get moved over to that account.
Vice Mayor? That's not my point, though. If we're changing the title and we're changing all the whereas's and we're changing even the section, I think that it should be rewritten and brought back to us. Councilmember Baklan?
I'd like to make a motion to postpone this to the next scheduled city council meeting.
I'll second that.
So, to the discussion of the postponement, I'm only willing to postpone it if we can schedule a meeting of the budget committee with the city manager and the finance director because I think that needs to happen quite quickly, correct? To decide what we're doing with these funds?
So, the intent was to have the whole program here tonight, and that's why it's co-mingled. Um, we were going to do a laydown to have just the act to receive the funds, but it, but if you're not ready to do the second part, it's just, you know, it takes time to get the check coming, but it's, it's not an imminent thing. It's going to happen either way. So, yeah, we, we do need to do that. I, I would, you know, we do have pretty full schedules and, you know, the deadline's what, next Tuesday? So, I, I mean, it's, there's a lot of work to happen.
What deadline?
Wait, two, two, for the next meeting?
Oh, thanks.
Yeah, our next.
Oh, oh, for the next.
The deadline for packages is next Tuesday.
So, a week from tomorrow.
So, it has to be all ready before Tuesday.
I, I, I didn't understand what you said. It has to be, is that what ended? Get the money?
Yeah.
Next week?
We have an extra.
So, if you're recommending the table, we'll just bring it back when it's changed, and then we may or may not have the additional programs finished by then. We would hope so, but.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, what I'm hearing is that there, the change could potentially be really substantial to this resolution. My recommendation would be to fail this resolution tonight and bring back a clean, fresh one and not try and substitute it if the changes are, changes are that substantial.
So, just my question of that, we don't.
And we also, I mean, I think this is all right. I mean, I think you could, because the changes don't change substantially the character, you'd be okay, but I agree with the city clerk and the mayor. I think, and I think Councilmember Baklan, you mentioned this too. I mean, what we're trying to do, and this is, this is on me because when I review other programs, I find the cleanest, most, uh, the, the progress of the greatest integrity as far as surviving challenge later, they have a separate appropriation and a clean program resolution, a separate end of state from the commitment to enter into the agreement, which is necessary to get the funds. And so, we, I think, and I did not, I did not counsel the city manager regarding that until, really, it was late Friday because that's when it sort of all came together and put the pieces together. So, I apologize to council for that. That is on me and definitely not on their administration. But I think that course of action, bringing it back with the separate resolutions and therefore the separate appropriations is the best way forward.
Councilmember Baklan?
I'd like to remove motion.
Okay. So, and that was to postpone?
Yeah.
So, I have one question, though. You know, there are rules about if something gets failed, when it can come back to council so that we don't have repeat things coming over and over and over. Would that fall under this? Would, if this got, gets failed, would that, would that, uh, other rule come into play at all?
No, you're fine with this particular, with the nature of the change and the, the nature of the resolution, you're fine.
It can be failed? Okay. Any further discussion? So, again, I, we can talk about it under the work session, discussion.
Mayor, I would, I would postpone, I would postpone the resolution. I do not put a date on the postpone, that's what kills the resolution. Instead of voting it down, the only reason why is this is an important program and council, you know, years from now, if someone's looking at the times of the program, I don't think you want to create a record that looks like it did not have council support.
But, or.
So, I think, uh, voting it down could have negative implications later.
Or we, I mean, then it sends a message to the state also.
Agreed, definitely.
So, here, here, why, so here's my question. Why can't we postpone it and then just have a whole substitute resolution that we can advertise so that the public's able to see that and that we can just adopt in one fell swoop when this comes back before us?
That works well, too.
Yeah, so let's just do that.
That would work great.
Okay, so let's go back to Councilmember Baklan.
I'd like to make a motion to postpone to a date uncertain.
Well, so here, uh, we'll see if that gets a second. So, here's my suggestion. So, so I think what we should do is we should postpone it to the next meeting, and then administration and the attorney can bring forward a totally substitute resolution that when we get to the next meeting, we can adopt all the changes in that substitute resolution. But that needs to be in front of us in writing ahead of time and out to the public.
Well, this, this is what happens when we try to rush and get things before they're vetted.
Well, I will say.
I mean, she could have, this was out on Tuesday. She could have read this. And to come up with more information, the day of the council meeting is disappointing. I'm sorry.
And I will, things are, things are changing, I'll admit that, but, you know, we'll, we'll get there.
Yeah, I didn't hear about any of that till Thursday in the meeting, so.
Councilmember Baklan?
I make a motion to postpone to our next, um, council meeting.
I will second that. Is there any further discussion? Thank you. Let's call for votes.
Postponing Resolution 2020-051 to July 13th, 2020. Kreitz?
Yes.
Cece?
Yes.
McClure?
Yes.
Ossenga?
Yes.
Baklan?
Yes.
Butts?
Yes.
Mayor Terry?
Yes.
So, this has been approved, and this will come back before you on July 13th.
So, seeing that we have 10 minutes before 11, I'll make a motion that we, uh, extend the meeting until midnight.
I'll second that.
Do we need a, there's a second before we do, should I add a break to that? Okay. Let's call for a vote.
Extending the meeting until midnight. Cece?
Yes.
Butts?
Yes.
Baklan?
Yes.
Kreitz?
Yes.
McClure?
Yes.
Ossenga?
Yes.
Merritt Terry?
Yes.
This motion has been approved.
Okay, next item on the agenda is, um, page 64, List of City Council Work Sessions that were either previously scheduled and then suspended or awaiting scheduling due to COVID-19 public health emergency. So, um, thank you, City Manager, for getting this list together from the last meeting request. On that list is our joint meeting to discuss the Resurrection River, um, with the airport, electric department, water and sewer rate study, wage study, capital projects workshop, and that's, um, ongoing projects and goals list, short, mid, and long. Uh, that could include the animal shelter. Um, review CIP budget documents and determine 2020, 2021 projects. Uh, capital project strategic plan, long-term, um. Are there any else that we're missing? The, one thing that's not on here that's not really a work session is I wanted to talk about that Budget Committee starting to meet. Are we ready to start scheduling work sessions or what's the wishes of the council?
Vice Mayor?
The issue with the work sessions was access by the public, so have we resolved that at all?
I didn't think it required public participation.
Work sessions? Oh, work sessions. Oh, the Budget Committee.
I mean, I mean, the Budget Committee.
Oh, I, I was just talking in general. I mean, because personally, I think we need to get on with the work sessions. So would we be having them here in this configuration or, I don't, that was what was holding things up, so I don't know.
So, um, Madam Clerk, where are we at with public size of meetings and, um, social distancing and wearing masks and state recommendations?
Well, um, having a work session is, the attendance is unpredictable, as is having a council meeting. So planning in the largest spending possible is always the best option. The community room at the library, when we had the special meeting there on June 12th, seemed to work out pretty well for the number of attendees, and some people came and left and came and left, so it seemed to work out fine. I would recommend you go to the community room if you want to start scheduling work sessions.
And access in the community again was 91.7 and then potentially Facebook.
Facebook Live, YouTube livestream, and the radio, if they're available, to come again.
For the work session.
And the only thing we would lose is the GCI broadcast.
Okay.
What are the wishes of council?
Yeah. Councilmember Bucklon.
I, um, well, not, I'm going to be getting into the busy time of my work right now, so I don't want to, I'm not going to be, most likely can't make a lot of the work sessions, so. July is a hard time for me. And I don't know how others feel about that, but.
It's all the same to me.
So I do know with the Sewer Bear Creek Flood Service Area Board, they're having meetings via Zoom and work sessions via Zoom. Wouldn't, and the public's being involved, and I think the borough's doing the same. For that one, could we coordinate with them and have a Zoom meeting or?
We can. If that's your, what you want to do, we'll do it.
And do that from here?
Yeah, could we have the, our portion of the Zoom be from here and have it on that monitor?
I don't know. I mean, I would, I can talk to them and try and coordinate it. I just, I can't give you a guarantee at this moment. I would assume that we can do that. I just, I don't know what that would be.
I know they're prepared to present the work session. It's just a matter of how do we get together? I, I don't know. Their space is really small compared to here, like over at the, the facility where they meet. So I'm not sure if that would be possible for us to go to their.
They've been Zooming, yeah. I mean, leading into this, the, the airport was clearly a, a major issue for the city. And just because we're dealing with COVID, our concerns with the airport have not gone away and our concerns with flooding, so.
I'm happy to reach out to them and find out what, what, what it would take and how realistic it would be for us to do it and bring it back.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is there anything else on here that, um, council would like to rise to the top? I know I did, but.
How do you choose?
So to the city administration, could you send out, um, like a Survey Monkey and try to get the Budget Committee together?
Yeah, I mean, that's got to happen for, at least for the CARES Act item. I, I think with, you know, restating the budget, that we would normally do that in January. So I know it doesn't really make sense to go off a forecast and what-ifs until we get through August and get our financials. There's, there's been so many changes in this budget already that it's kind of, budgeting is kind of. We're going to have a lot of changes and modifications, which a lot of that's cost savings, but then again, a lot of it isn't. So, and just personnel-wise alone, we've had a lot of redirection and changes and.
So for that CARES Act, did you, so, because it seems like you're waiting on our recommendations for the process.
Well, so we have a meeting tomorrow. Um, some of us do with the, I'm trying to think of what entity that was, with the hospice.
Oh, yeah, that doesn't have to do with this.
It doesn't have to do with cares?
No, not necessarily.
So the big piece was, we discussed having like a call out for nonprofits to send us grant application or some kind of need, because there's not very many of them. Um, so that piece could be handled fairly, relatively easily with the committee. Um, the business piece.
Can that, can that be done now?
Councilmember Bucklon.
Can, it, can that be done now? I mean, you know, like if you.
I mean, so the logistics, the council wants to see in accounting for the city expenses. And I'm, you know, today we're doing budget and we're doing this and, like, I don't have anybody to put on that, so. I do have a consultant now. We can reach out to him and be like, hey, we need to do an accounting, but it's, it's hard, it's hard to do that. I mean, Kenai needs to do it by the 30th of June because they're on a different fiscal year. So they're, they're doing that now, but for us, it's, you know, how do you go through all the time sheets, all the expenses with the city? You know, if you want a really detailed explanation, I mean, it's going to take time and it's going to take working through all those things with an accounting person. I can't just say, hey, this is what I think it is.
I think that's what we're looking for, though. I think, I think there's got to be some way for you to have a feeling of 25% of the time, 50% of the time.
So, so let's, even just personnel-wise, there's no IRS definition of what constitutes a majority. So is that 1% or 60% of your time during that period? That'll probably change and we'll get a definition from the IRS as that moves forward. But let's say we say 50% of all those salaries. We can calculate that just from running our payroll. But, but if you don't know what the IRS definition is, do you use 10% or 60 or 100? I mean, several of those weeks, a lot of our staff, that's, you know, all we did was meetings and COVID and. So police and fire and EMS is all, pretty much that whole time is accountable.
But just, so we just adopted the, the COVID money for the fire department. That doesn't cover any of their stuff?
That's, that's just a $5,000 grant. That's not.
It's not really.
It's not really going to do much to our budget shortfall, so.
Mayor Terry.
Yes.
Um, I, I called, um, Chief Kreitz today, um, and I asked him, you know, I wanted to know what, what, what that money was going to go in. Most of it, he said, um, was going to go to reusable gowns for the, um, fire department, which had a cost of like $2,500. Um, and then there was some other, um, oh, okay.
Now, this is, so under the act, um, several of this peninsula cities, um, are, you know, like, Saldovia, all of the monies go into the city. Um, Cordova just copied what we did, Kenai did.
I mean, it's, that's going to small tools and something else on that account.
This is, covers all operations related to COVID with the city.
I'm talking about the $5,000.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Oh, okay, yeah, I don't.
Yeah.
I'm, that's not really a.
So, so I guess my question with the Budget Committee is, so before us today, we had adopting that money, right? But then you're waiting on input for the other piece.
So we'll bring it up.
So how can we get you input on that?
Um, so the Budget Committee was going to get together and just determine, like, are we going to, you have a request from Sea Life Center. Um, you have a couple of the other nonprofits and the grants. So if we reach out to them, I mean, there's, you know, there's less than 60 total, but there's really like 10 or 12 that probably would be impacted. Um, I did talk to Paul. Um, out of their 1,350 businesses, less than 10% even applied for their CARES funding. And that's because, you know, out of 1,350, there was 461 that were eligible, because only one business, multiple ownerships. Um, so they had 130 applications as of Thursday and it closed Friday. So it, it's hard to say where that's going to go when you actually pick these things out. So, and, you know, one of the things we need to look at is the Budget Committee. It's easier to do that in a small session, but you're like, okay, what about places like Icicles and JAG that spent hundreds of thousands of extra dollars testing all these people to not come into our community and not just pushing out here? Those are the kinds of things you probably want to investigate. Do they get a higher return than just a calculation? Or do you not want to do that? It's really, the, the whole gam is up to the council to determine how you want to implement the funds. I think the critical piece is all of those managers are, and, and the boroughs is a perfect example. They're not, the borough's not pushing it at the cities, even though a big portion of their funding comes from the city sales tax. So it's important to keep in mind that a lot of that money is sustainability money for the city as well.
So we're on scheduling work sessions. I wanted to schedule a Budget Committee meeting to discuss all those items. When did you want to schedule to do that? Or did you want to have Vianna do a Survey Monkey?
I think, yeah, they could reach out to Vianna, because I, you know, like all day Thursday, I have.
Okay. Well, maybe, maybe if Vianna could do a Survey Monkey to check when people are available and know your schedule and get that, get that scheduled. Does that sound good? Okay. And then I think that covers the work sessions. Were there any other work sessions people wanted to discuss? Next on the agenda is evaluate city attorney candidates, and that's on page 65, if we want to go through the, uh, evaluation form. So this is the open meetings portion of it, so we're going to talk about the city interviews. And then from there, um, we have a few more items on the agenda, but then we'll go into an executive session to talk about, um, negotiating with the city attorney that we chose. So everyone should have their, uh, interview questions or maybe notes that they took for watching the interviews. Was everyone able to watch the interviews that didn't attend?
I, yes, I did.
Councilmember Butts, were you able to watch the interviews?
I was not. I was on a cell phone at that time.
Okay, okay. So we won't, did we, so there's a couple of ways we can do this. In our packet are the tabulation evaluation forms. We can go through those. We can start a discussion. We can, um, rate folks one and two and see if we all have the same one and two and go from there. Or, you know, how, how do folks want to proceed? Did I do this?
Yeah.
Yeah, I just went ahead of time. It was in our packet.
I like the one and two rating.
So one and two. Let's see if we can make this easy and go around and do one and two. Um, Councilmember Ossenga, did you have a one and two?
I do, but I'm trying to remember the, I'm trying to remember which.
Which one was which?
Yeah.
Well, so there was the first one that we saw was Boyd Chandler, Faulkner, and Munson. And we had Brooks Chandler here in the chambers. And then the second one was the Landy Bennett Blumstein, and it was Leslie Kneed and Matt Need.
Um, I think I had Boyd Chandler, I, if I remember correctly, uh, I missed him first, and then Landy, and then he was second.
Okay, so one and two. Councilmember Kreitz?
I was blocking that down.
Oh, okay. Councilmember Ossenga? Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Bucklon?
It's okay, Terry.
I was.
What a compliment, Jerry. You're so sharp.
I mean, I just messed, I messed up the two men on council. Sorry, Dale, you're not here for me to miss this. Thank you.
Um, Boyd Chandler was my one and Landy Bennett was my two.
Okay. Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I agree. Um, the, um, presentation that Brooks Chandler gave, he had no notes. He spoke well. Um, there were many things about what he said, um, it just impressed me more, so that would be my one.
And I seem to be going with the, with the flow. I thought that Brooks Chandler did a, a great presentation. I think both would be fine, but I was, uh, impressed by Brooks Chandler, both his experience and his competency speaking. Councilmember Cease?
I agree. Um, it was, since we heard both of them, I already had said that, um, Brooks was very good. Can I just ask one question, you know? If you weren't at the meeting and you, you can't comment, you didn't watch it again afterwards?
No, I admitted that honestly, that that was an option from the day.
Um, because Linda did it. She put it on hers and it was also on.
It's on YouTube.
YouTube.
Well, that's okay.
I know, but I just wondered why they hadn't, hadn't done it.
And Councilmember Butts?
Councilmember, oh, sorry, Councilmember, no, we said he was out of cell service, so I wasn't going to ask him.
Okay.
So I think we'll just continue and we'll get to the, um, unless there's further discussion. I think that was easy enough. Okay, also on the agenda, um, in the packet, ongoing city project and goal lists, uh, city improvements financials. Are there any comments? City Clerk memo and notice of vacancy for city representative on the Cook Inlet Aquaculture Association Board. And that's based on, um, is that what Mr. Swett was here and saying he couldn't? No, okay, thank you. And then, um, City Clerk memo on the 2020 election, page 124. Did you have any explanation on that, Madam Clerk, that you wanted to bring to our attention?
Well, I just wanted to lay out all the dates, um, and the timing so that folks were aware of the upcoming election. And also just to point out that with the ADA grant that's been being installed in the, um, on the west side of City Hall, to let folks know that the polling location has officially been moved back to City Hall from, uh, so we won't be at the Ray Building. All the elections will happen inside City Hall.
And so where could, um, where can the citizens find this information? Is it just in the packet or as we get closer to, you'll be advertising the dates?
Oh, yes, we have election information on our website. I haven't started updating that. We'll, we'll, um, start advertising for the candidacy, but not until July. So I'm just trying to get ahead of things and put it on people's radars that, um, you know, put the dates in front of them. Encourage people to register to vote if they haven't or update it.
Great, very helpful. Thank you. So now we're on citizen comments. So folks were able to submit comments for the second portion?
But we didn't receive any.
No comments were received, thank you. So now we're on council and administration comments in response to citizen comments. Um, City Manager Mizaras, would you like to start us off?
Uh, did you sign up earlier?
I did.
I didn't want to verify with the clerk.
I sent an email that said three and a five, didn't I, Brenda?
It was public hearing and the first citizen comments that we had before.
I took you as the first citizen, but, yes, you did send me that email. I just wasn't, I just assumed it was the first one. So, okay, go, yeah, I did.
Yes, please, thank you.
I don't really understand what went on tonight. And maybe there's a bunch of, just, you know, emails that you got that didn't get counted, but I understood Alvin had collected 99 signatures and there were at least, I don't know, seven or 10 positives. That would have been 109 to maybe 30, and you ended up with no mask ordinance at all. So I don't know whether that means that the city's going to go back and just do a, a thing that they can do without having an ordinance that says that when you're in a city building. Um, but I, I just feel like you really, you left the medical people in our community out and unsupported, and I, I, I don't understand it, but anyway. Because, because to me, that's a 70/30 split, 70% in support of masks. 'Cause to me, that's a 70/30 split, 70% in support of masks, 30% not. So, I don't understand how we come away from this night without something positive requiring masks. The other thing I wanted to talk about is there's a discussion that got posted on Facebook about somebody in the Bear Lake area would like to sit on council. So, I just wanted to remind people that back on May 9th of 2019, there is a video on Seward's civic engagement, sorry, it's hard to talk like this. It's titled, "Expanding Seward's Voter Base." So, I, I would just suggest to people that we've had this conversation, we got as far as forming a committee, but the, the parameters are such that either, this is what could happen, to expand Seward's voter base, you have about three things you could do. The city of Seward could decide they wanted to add seats, and they all could make some changes to their documents and the way things run, and that could happen, that's the one choice. The second choice would be annexation. The third choice would be to form some form of service area or citizens advisory board. There is no mechanism, even though I found legal precedents in Colorado, in tourist areas where the city councils have made changes, because of the state Alaska laws and the local boundary commission laws, there is no mechanism unless you change the existing laws. So, to work within what exists right now, like I said, either council could decide to add seats and go through that whole process that you would do as a city to do that, they would probably not be voting seats because there's no taxation, right? You've got this whole representation without taxation problem. Then your other option is annexation, which we're not gonna, nobody wants to talk that. So, the other thing is a service area. And you might be able to create a service area that would give people outside the city voice in some way, but again, that's, you've gotta go through the local boundary commission to do that. So, I just thought, you know, the video's out there, there's expertise discussed in that discussion, and then, you know, those are the three things. So, there's no mechanism that exists, the way the laws are written right now, to do anything. So, it requires a lot of work and a lot of dedication, and the small committee that got formed, it got to be summer, and, you know, then there was no support from administration, so it just sort of all fell apart. But it could be easily brought back together, those people are still as interested as they were, I'm sure, but that's just where it was, so I thought I'd just share that for you, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Maz, or, I'm sorry, City Manager Mazares, did you wanna start the comments?
I just didn't go through all my updates, but I just, the budget should have been emailed to you, it should be online. The numbering, so it's going off to print tomorrow, and the printer does the table of contents and then the page enumeration, and then we'll update the newest version of that when we get it back. I think that's about it. I do wanna mention that I'm not gonna be here on the 13th, as several of the other board members, or council members are not. The 13th, I have a family function, so either Norm or Doug will be acting. That's it.
Councilmember Osenga?
I'd like to thank everybody for their comments. I know there was a lot of comments, a lot of heartfelt comments, a lot of, a lot of emotion in, in the comments that were given to us today by a lot of different people. I would like to say that I agree with an education and information to the public regarding COVID-19, I do believe that's a good idea. I would've liked to have seen some kind of a mandate, I was a little disappointed at how fast it was dismantled and became nothing that was even similar to what we started with, but that's the way it goes, so... But just, again, thanks for all the comments, and that's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Kreitz?
Same, I agree with Councilmember Osenga as far as the comments, I really appreciate and listen to every one of them, and both sides of it, I understand. I am disappointed that it didn't go through as originally intended, I just want everybody to realize that this is a public health issue, and sometimes that takes precedence over what people feel, you know, civil liberties and rights and things like that, that it's just protection of people that can't protect themselves, it's a public health problem. As far as, I think that was, that was it, thank you.
Councilmember Buckland?
I just wanna say thank you for everyone who wrote in and submitted their comments. Thank you.
Councilmember Sees?
I also wanna thank everybody for all the emails that were sent, there was so many of them on there, it took quite a while just to find out if they were for it or against it. I, after it started to get all changed around in the first place, I was going to vote it down because of the $25 and putting the police department or who was going to do it. Then when everything else was getting turned around, I think it has to be reissued, redone to a different, without having some of that stuff in there. And I don't think it should just be the state, or the city, that mandates it. But then also, that if you're gonna mandate everybody to do it, or make sure they do it, then I think there ought to be some way that the funds for the mask, if they don't have one on, shouldn't be the responsibility, they've already had enough trouble giving theirselves going and losing money. And I think there should be something of that fund in the end, but from that, out of that $5 million.
Thank you. Vice Mayor McClure?
Well, wanna also thank everyone who rose to the occasion and emailed like crazy, I mean, you, what we heard tonight was just a portion of what we received in emails, and on both sides completely, and I, I didn't keep a tally, I don't keep a tally. My, my concern was the, the fine, and that was, you know, getting our police department to have to go around and deal with that, and, so, anyway, I think that, I agree with Mayor Terry, that people need to be more educated on why they should wear masks, there will still be people who will not wear masks, so you've just gotta accept that, too, it's just gonna happen, either way, so... Also, be careful around town these next coming weekends, I think personally, I'm probably not gonna go downtown on the 4th of July weekend, being the caretaker of someone older, you know, I think I'll just stay away, so, there'll be a party, and we should just be cautious, and I don't envy our police department for what they're gonna be dealing with, and really appreciate you guys.
So, I just wanna remind citizens, so, all those people that wrote comments, make sure your friends and neighbors are also filling out census information. So, I think that people that are publicly engaged have already done that, but make sure your friends and neighbors are doing the same. I wanna thank, oh, Councilmember Butt, I skipped you, I'll go first, and I'll go back to you. Thank 91.7 for always having us on the radio, it was a nice shout-out to them today. I wanna make sure that folks also, before tomorrow night, contact our local borough representative, and also reach out to the mayor, everyone that wrote us today should do the same, reach out to the borough mayor, and support our application, so that we, our planning person is on the seat of the Borough Planning Commission. That is very important to local businesses and residents. Again, I'm gonna say, I hope that the CHC and Providence, Chugachmu, Public Health, I hope that there's a huge, I think, hearing from the medical experts and having a public outreach, I'd like to see those folks do op-eds in the paper, have more information on Facebook, add it to their webpages, I think even calling local businesses and providing a lot of information. I think that the encouragement should come from the health sector and not the city, because I think the city always has to balance both public health and public safety. And looking around the country at our civil unrest right now, there is no way I wanna put our police force in the middle of something like that. Seward is doing great, we're a peaceful community, and we need to keep that up. I wanna tell the public to keep up the good work, we've had very few COVID cases, but we need to be vigilant. In addition to masks, folks should be washing hands and having good hygiene, please maintain social distancing, face coverings are one important piece of the puzzle, but also you need to maintain a small social circle, so make sure you're seeing the same people. If you have any symptoms, stay home, stay home from work if you're sick, clean and disinfect, and also get tested. I think the testing requirements are being loosened more and more, I know that there's a private entity, you know, Glacier Family Clinic, you don't have to have a referral, you can, can go there and be tested. And again, it's not just about one aspect of being healthy and, and getting over COVID, it's all these things. And there is one more thing, we do have a sign at our boardwalk, but I don't know if the medical community, or if there's funds, if there's a statewide, if there's any sort of consistency with signage, 'cause Homer has signs, which, we're beating Homer, but, you know, Homer has signs, and so if there's statewide consistency, I also think that that would help with make sure in public. So, I don't know if we, I know you're in some of those meetings, if we can maybe work on getting more signage, especially before the 4th of July. I don't know if you've seen their signs, they're quite bright, they have, you know, the same messaging, if that's going from community to community, I think that would be helpful for our crowds that are coming. And then, Councilmember Butt, I'll let you have the last word, since I forgot you.
I just wanna say thank you to Councilmember Kreitz and Councilmember Osenga for the passion you guys have there, too. I'm hoping that we can come up with something that is a really good compromise. I am going to make a personal commitment to wear my mask more, and, and social distancing, and these things are due, so I'm gonna make sure that I'm doing the right thing, too, as hopefully as anybody else. Of course, washing our hands. Quick shout-out then to Jess Sweat again, too, for, thank you for, for your service with that one there, too. And, oh, yes, and the radio, and thank you very much for what they do, they all make a whole lot of money out of it, and it's not, it's not a big thing to do, but they are there for the community, that's all I got.
So, before we make the motion to go into executive session, looking at administration and clerk, how do those normally go? Is it just normally council that's in there, or should we have someone in here with us? How, how should that proceed?
If you're gonna direct the city manager to negotiate the contract on your behalf, then it would be council and the city manager.
Okay. Councilmember Buckland?
Are we negotiating a contract, since the contract is flat fee?
Well, I mean, we can discuss the flat fee, and if we wanna counter with anything, I mean, we have that ability to discuss in, in a, you know, in an executive session. So, Holly, thank you for joining us tonight.
Thank you, have a good night.
So, Dale, we'll have you stay on, does anyone need a break before the executive session? So, we'll go into executive session to include Dale on the phone, and the city manager, and council.
Do we have a motion for it?
I'll move that. Do we have a second?
A second. So, going into executive session to discuss strategy for negotiating the city attorney contract, Osenga?
Yes.
Sees?
Yes.
Buckland?
Yes.
Butt?
Yes.
Kreitz?
Yes.
McClure?
Yes.
Mayor Terry?
Yes.
So, this has been approved, and it is now 11:24.